This meeting of the New Hanover County Board of Education Policy Committee to order first item on our agenda is a roll call. I will go ahead and call roll, Ms. Crable.
Here.
Mr. Wildamore.
Present.
Excellent. Moving on to item two, approval of the agenda, are there any additions or deletions?
Um, yeah, I just wanted to ask, um, the, are we going to talk about policy twenty-three thirty? Um, so that we're able to talk about that at our board meeting tonight? Twenty-three thirty is the board meeting agenda, um, where we have the ad hoc committee that is, um, that has proposed changes that we need to come to some agreement on and get it presented and out there.
Sure, did you want to make a motion to discuss policy twenty-three thirty board agenda?
Yes, make that motion.
Okay, there's a motion, uh, is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, there is a motion and a second, Ms. Crable, how do you vote? No, sorry, any discussion?
Oh, oh, no, I mean, just put it on the agenda, yes.
No.
Okay, how do you vote?
What was that?
I said, how do you vote? Ms. Crable, how do you vote?
Oh, I am voting to add policy twenty-three thirty to the board meeting agenda, I mean, to the agenda for the policy committee meeting today.
Okay.
That was my motion, and I, and I vote yes, to add it to the agenda. Oh, guess what, my, electricity is trying to come back on.
Nelson, you there?
Yeah, I, I, Pete, are you still there? Am I still there?
I still hear you, but I can't hear Nelson at all.
He looks like he's frozen.
Well, so much for moving along quickly. Let me try him on the phone. Maybe he doesn't know, we lost him. Hey, we lost you. Okay. Oh, shoot, okay, all right, thank you, bye. All right, uh, board members and everyone else, uh, what has happened is he also has lost internet, so he's going to sign back in via his phone. So, we'll take a moment, uh, to wait for him.
Did we lose Ms. Crable as well?
Committee have won now, my goodness, I think it'll take a lot of votes really quick. We may have.
Oh, wait a minute, I was on mute, I can hear you guys, I'm still here.
Okay, we're just waiting, I don't know if you heard me, but we're waiting.
I heard you, yeah.
Okay, all right, fair enough.
So, I am trying to get, my, my lights came back on, but now we, I still don't have internet, but I'm trying.
Okay. If anyone would like to entertain us with a song, we can, you know, do that while we wait. Anybody, anybody got a great voice that we don't know about?
I think you should do that, Mr. Wildamore.
Oh, well, I could do that, but then everybody would be scared and be going to the exits and probably don't want to do that, right? We're losing enough as it is.
Oh, wait a minute, I think I might be having internet right now. Okay, let's try again.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes, sir, we, we got you now.
Okay, yeah, sorry, I guess I, I caught an internet bug too, so, um, yeah. So, I will have to be doing this by phone also. All right, uh, we were adding policy twenty-three thirty board meeting agendas, uh, to the meeting agenda.
I myself too.
Okay, um, Mr. Wildamore, how do you vote?
Uh, yay.
Okay, Ms. Crable, how do you vote?
Yay.
And I also vote yay, please add policy twenty-three thirty to the moving on to, oh, I'm sorry, now I need a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
There's a motion, is there a second, any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Crable, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Wildamore, how do you vote?
Yay.
And I vote yes, the agenda is approved as amended. Moving on to item three, approval of the minutes, is there a recommendation to approve?
Uh, by, by, uh, just to let you know, according to my computer, we just lost Ms. Crable.
I, I went off on my computer, I mean, I went off my phone and now I'm on the computer.
Okay, you're back, good, all right, very good.
And I, um, I make a motion to approve when it, approve the minutes.
I second.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Crable, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Wildamore, how do you vote?
Yay.
And I vote yes, the minutes are approved. Moving on to item four, policy updates from the North Carolina School Board Association, uh, do we want to begin with discussion of policy twenty-three thirty?
That's a good idea.
Let's go ahead and get that done.
Okay. Meetings and agendas, um, the recommendations from Ms. Justice's committee, do we have those uploaded?
All right, so, how, how do we handle this?
Uh, we vote yes or no to?
Okay, so, let, let me, let me go through this real quick, so, in her recommendations, um, from her committee, um, it says that is there a way to have this pulled up on the screen from a previous, um, um, I found it in a previous board meeting, it was on the May eleventh, um, board meeting, posted in assembly. It says two meetings a month, um, or maybe, maybe somebody's doing it?
Yes, I believe Ms. Bagby is doing that, thank you very much, Ms. Bagby.
We are trying, yes, sir.
I'm pretty certain I found it under the May eleventh.
Maybe under the supporting documents, down?
Yes, it should be at the very top.
Oh, at the top?
Yeah, see where it says that one right there?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Okay, so, um, if you, if you recall, from after the, um, May eleventh meeting, we decided that we did not want to accept these proposed changes, but we didn't make additional changes, we sent it back to the ad hoc committee. And so, I don't recall, and I couldn't find anywhere, receiving another one. So, um, I would like to move forward with looking at our current agenda. Um, is there a way to put those screens side by side, the recommendations and the, um, twenty-three thirty together? It's way out of my wheelhouse, but if anybody can do it, Anita can do it. I can keep talking while we're doing that, so, um, that's, oh, here it's coming. What we were, um, what we talked about was two meetings a month are, are good, um, but if I recall correctly, we didn't want to mandate two meetings a month because we already have in our policy that says that we can have an interim board meeting, um, on the, um, third Tuesday of the month. So, and then there's also in our policy somewhere that says, um, if you don't finish, then you can just roll things over. So, I wanted to, um, suggest that we not mandate two meetings, but use it as we needed to, and we can, we can determine that at the end of each board meeting. So, when we're looking at the sample proposal about, um, farther down, the work session from five until sixteen, um, we don't necessarily need a work session at every board meeting, the, um, or, or we can, you know, put one in. And maybe we have to add verbiage about at the discretion of the, the chair and the superintendent, you know, do we need that meeting? Um, and so I was a little confused when, could you scroll up a little bit so that we could see, um, the sample proposal? There you go, thanks, um, so, is the approval of, in the work session, is the, um, unclear if the approval of the agenda is for a work session, um, and approval of the minutes, is it for the work session, or is it for the entire meeting? Um, so, we would need to just, from maybe this committee, just make a recommendation there. And then also, as we're looking through the other, the other items, the, the, the whole purpose of this, um, committee, um, that Ms. Justice asked for, was to make our meetings more efficient. But I would like to propose that if we use simly features, um, that are available to us, that we can make our meetings more efficient. Um, one of them, um, being that we can post motions, um, for the supporting documents ahead of time, um, on the main point section of, um, our agenda, so we don't get surprised, or the new word on our board seems to be blindside, we don't get any of those, um, or we can really put that to a minimum. Um, we can, as we get better at this, we can align our agenda items with our strategic plan goals and action items, and with our board committee plans of work, um, so that it's really easy, you know, um, it's, I guess, more strategic, if you will, on what we put on our agenda, so we're not just pulling things out, you know, of, of the air. Um, and we can also vote simultaneously, um, so we can eliminate some time, um, of doing the roll call for every single vote. So, those are ways that we can make our meetings more efficient without having to do a drastic overhaul. Um, so, and, and the, the other thing that yet, that we had brought up before was, um, that the things that the, the ad hoc committee wanted to move to the work session were things like information, um, committee reports, and perhaps things that the general population might want to listen to more, um, so if, if, if we had those in the beginning, then we might not have as many people listening, you know, if, if that is a concern of ours, so those, those were my comparisons of the two, and so I just, um, I just think that we need to decide as a policy committee, are we going to accept this, or, and bring it forward, or are we going to continue to just float around?
And if I could add my two cents in, I think, I, as, as I remember, uh, at the meeting we had that we all were at, uh, with Tom, um, I think, I think it was pretty much unanimous that we all liked the idea of having a pre-session. That's what, you know, he had recommended it, if you remember, uh, the, I think, the wake, I think is where he said he was, and they had it, and it made the, you know, the, the, the actual meeting brought it down significantly to a, to a manageable amount of time. And, and I think I had added to that discussion that, you know, in Pender, they, they have the, the committee of the whole, uh, which meets, and they, you know, there's a lot of, uh, input and a lot of folks that actually go to that meeting. Uh, of course, it would also be an open meeting to follow, you know, the rules and the laws of our state. Um, but I think that, you know, as I remember, uh, I don't think there was any, uh, negative, uh, feedback from anyone when, when that, I, at least that piece of this, this discussion was brought up, the, the pre-meeting was, uh, you know, and I mean, I probably would have to work back and forth on what would be included in the pre-meeting, what wouldn't be included in the pre-meeting, um, but I mean, I think it is, uh, you know, and I think leaning on maybe Tom, um, for some, some advice, maybe, uh, you know, instructing, or, or asking our, our chairman to, to share with, uh, Ms. Fontaine over in Pender, exactly what they do, who's their chair, um, I mean, I, instead of trying, us trying to reinvent the wheel and, and start from square one, I think we have some great resources that we can call upon that, um, would love to help us in, in this, this move. I mean, I, I think, my, to answer you, to, to answer your, uh, final question, I think that really, this, this should be brought on to the board for a full board discussion, I mean, I think it is important enough, we've, we've, uh, Mr., uh, you know, vice chairman and, uh, Ms. Justice, uh, were on this committee together, I think it's, you know, I think it is important, I think we all want to not be making crucial decisions at eleven-thirty at night, uh, as we've done way too much, um, so I think that maybe, um, I do agree with you, I don't think we need to have a formal second meeting, uh, that has to be done, uh, every time, I think it would be at the discretion of the board, uh, whether or not a second meeting is needed that month, but, you know, I think most months it probably would be, but, um, I think that that might be something that we leave off of this as we push it forward, but I do think it does need to come to the, to the entire board for discussion.
Oh, no, and, and, and I'm not, I'm not, um, disputing that, Pete, I just want us to bring something more concrete to the whole board for discussion, so we can vote on it, yes, we're going to do it, or no, we're not, because all we've been doing since April twenty-eighth, April twenty-ninth, when the, the second ad hoc committee, um, met, I think it met one time, it actually met like two times before that, um, we're not getting anywhere, and I just feel like we need to get someplace, and I recognize Dr. Faust with his hand up.
So, my, my question is, what is the ultimate goal, what are we trying to get to? I'm not sure of the objective, if we're saying a shorter meeting, um, a more, what's the goal?
It was my understanding that the goal was to have, um, more efficient and effective meetings. Um, and one of, one result of a more efficient meeting would be a shorter meeting, um, so, um, but the only way to get to that, in, this is Stephanie Crable's personal opinion, is we have to stop adding things to the agenda, um, and then spending the time to vote on adding things to the agenda, um, we have to get better at, if we think we're going to make a motion, um, or we know we're going to make a motion, let's just say it right out loud and put it up there so we can plan for it. Um, so, I think efficiency doesn't necessarily mean moving items around, it just means we've got to do better, and I don't know that change in our agenda, um, policy is necessarily going to get us there, because all we're really doing is moving the clock. You know, do we, do we meet earlier and still meet six hours, but we're at it ten, or do we meet later and we meet six hours and we're out at one, you know, so that's, I think that's what the ultimate goal was, maybe Nelson can weigh in on that, because he was on the committee.
Yeah, Ms. Crable, that was the ultimate goal, and I share some of your concerns, if we want to do a work session, let's just add a work session. I thought the purpose of a work session was really just to work through some of the concerns that the board had about any agenda item. Um, and, and, you know, so when we get to the board meeting, we don't have to have a forty-minute discussion, we can, we've already worked through a lot of these concerns, um, with individual board members, and we could vote, uh, and I think this was the point, um, in May, when we discussed this, is I don't really see what this accomplishes. Um, if the objective of the committee is to shorten the meetings, I just don't see that this, this accomplishes that goal.
My question then would be, what would you like to see from folks here, the district, in a work session? Um, because as a work session, I, what I'm accustomed to, or I think what would work is, if we're doing a work session, we present things, and you have it under information, or we bring it to you, we let you hear it, you ask all your questions, and then at the next meeting, there's a vote for it, if there's something that needs to render a vote, but you don't vote for it, um, at the first meeting, it's always that informational time, that we can do, but I don't know, that's why I'm trying to help, what, what do you want to hear from our side? Because if it's our side that is, um, extending the meetings, then, of course, we, I can talk with our folks and say, okay, you have X amount of time, this is what we need to do, but I just need some guidance from the board, if that's the case, or if it is just the discussions that you're having, um, so how, bottom line is, how do we help get to the objective that you're wanting to get?
I kind of see work sessions in two ways, one, what you've just described, you bring us issues, uh, or topics, things that we need to talk about and learn more about, so that we can have an open dialogue, just sort of conversational, and it's not us sitting at the dais, you know, just asking questions after question to your folks standing at the podium, but I also see, um, a work session as a time where, let's say, um, well, this is one of the things I'm going to bring up, um, again, is looking at our board policy committee, um, um, which is twenty-two thirty, so a work session would be, let's talk about our committees, let's talk about, you know, plans of work, let's talk about do we have the right committees, you know, so that we can work through some of these kinds of things, and then just bring it to the policy committee, you know, to look at, you know, so I see it as both ways, is us having things we want to talk about amongst ourselves, and then also you bringing us stuff that is appropriate, like when we maybe have to talk about the strategic plan, you know, we, we, we get more information, we ask conversational questions, and then we get to sit on it for a meeting, and maybe that, if we have a work session at, you know, before the regular board meeting, then we could vote on it perhaps at an interim meeting, because we've had time to think about it, digest it, ask more questions out of the meeting if we have to, um, that, that's kind of what, what I was get, what I was thinking about when I heard that, when we established this committee.
And I think there was one, you know, big concern, I agree with Ms. Crable, I think one of the big concerns was that, you know, we, we talk about it at whatever it is, five o'clock, or, uh, four o'clock, and then, five o'clock, I guess, and then we would vote on it like two hours later, and there wouldn't be a lot of time to really di- digest and stuff, so, I don't think there's any problem at all with, with, you know, her suggestion there of, you know, discuss, having a pre-session, um, you know, on, before the first, the regular meeting, and then actually voting on those agenda items, uh, at the interim session, I think that would make some, you know, some good sense.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that, I just don't like what is on the work session here with committee reports information, like I said, I, I agree with what Dr. Faust was saying, which they bring us information and give us more time to, to process it, I don't know why it's, it's set up like that, but the way it's set up, I guess, is my problem, I don't think that will lead to anything more efficient.
Well, again, I, I would recommend maybe that the ad hoc committee, you know, and, and, number one, I want to say thank you to everyone on that committee for going this far, but I think it also would make some sense at this point, maybe to, and, and I'm just going to reiterate what I said a minute ago, and I hate to do that, but I'm going to come back to that, I mean, we have some, uh, good examples, I mean, Tom, uh, brought up some great, uh, reasoning for, uh, you know, for a pre-session, uh, we have a neighbor that does a pre-session that helps their meetings, um, you know, immensely, from what I understand. I sat down with Ms. Fontana the other day about several items, and one of them being that pre-session, and she, you know, she was like, yeah, you know, have somebody call me, we'll sit down and go through it, so maybe we want to turn this back to the ad hoc committee and ask them to contact, you know, uh, Tom, and also, uh, you know, Cindy, and see if, if they can get further information or recommendations, and, you know, bring it back, or we can bring it to the whole board, whichever way you guys want to go, and then ask maybe, maybe have somebody ask that ad hoc through that situation, or that, that avenue.
So, in the meantime, what, while you're trying to get yours, we will go with, I'll tell you the, the way that I know that could help our folks, is to do the information in one, and then, if there's something that needs to be brought back for a vote, we'll start that for you, um, we can start that in, in August, because I know there'll be two meetings in August, if there's something that we vote on, we will put it in an informational part, and let you know that this is information that will be brought back to you, um, for a vote.
So, what do we need to, uh, what do we need to do, Nelson, about, um, bringing this back to the whole board? Because to me, if, if we're going, I mean, I like that idea, I want to get started as soon as possible, because, so that we can start moving forward. And I, if, if we're going to get feedback from other people, I would like to get feedback from boards that are more like ours, as far as, um, a seven-member board, um, boards that, um, govern over school systems of our size, um, and complexity, um, so that we are really comparing apples to apples. But do we need to put words together here right now in this policy, or do we need to draft something else, um, and bring it back, or what do we have to do next?
Ms. Crable, honestly, what I would do is, Dr. Faust has said we're going to start doing a work session, and let's see how that goes, um, again, I, I'm hesitant to change something without understanding the purpose behind it.
I know, but it's my understanding that we have to change, we have to make a recommendation, um, at this meeting to start that, the, so, I mean, I don't mind Charles doing it at all.
The only change I would make to the current policy would be to add a work session to the agenda. That would be the only change that I would really make.
Okay, then, then let's, let's do that, and then, um, and bring that forth, can we bring that forth at the meeting tonight?
I certainly think so, yeah.
And then be ready to roll on August the third? Is that, is that doable, Deborah, are we allowed to do that?
So, because this is a policy that's already in existence, and you would just be recommending to revise it, you don't need to have a, a second reading, you can have first reading, um, and approval tonight, if that's what you'd like to do.
Okay.
You just need to come up with some language, um, and it's not, not clear how much of this you would, you would move around, or if you would just add a line that says work session, um, and
I would just.
Leave it a little bit, leave it a little bit broad so that you can fine tune it in practice.
That's exactly what I would do, I would just add a line that says work session, if that's agreeable to the rest of the committee.
All right, so, where do we stick it, do we put it, do we open call to order, invitation, pledge of allegiance, roll call, have a work session, we do? Or do we just get there and say, okay, we're in a work session now?
I would say we do the second, just because, like, the pledge allegiance and that kind of thing, eventually, we're going to want to have, you know, maybe Hogarth High School, or Laney, or whoever else.
Oh, right, okay.
Do all that stuff, and we don't want to have them come before it, and if they're not going to be seen, you know, like, say, it's not all about being seen, but I think that that would make sense, that when we do the actual, you know, the, the, the regular part of the meeting, we would have that, you know, that person, that, that group, not that person, but that group doing that.
So, you would just need the call to order and roll call to determine you had a quorum, and then
Okay.
you could move to the work session.
Okay, so, call to order, so, so, do we just type that up, do we have, Crystal just type that and have it ready for tonight, is that what we do?
You should have a Word version of the, um, policy twenty-three thirty, and you could just add in, in red, um, after, after call to order and roll call, add in work session.
Okay. All right, so, is that something Crystal can do for us, do we think? Dr. Faust? Is that something Crystal can do for us, and they just, um, post it on Simly so where everybody can look at it?
Sure, you just need to, if, uh, Deborah, you'll send her the, the verbiage, I don't, Crystal's not on.
Okay. Oh, sorry.
I'll make sure she says the right things.
I'll be glad to do that, it may be just as easy for me to type it into the document itself and send it on to you, so you can post it.
Right, right.
Thank you.
Okay, that's awesome, I, I think that is a positive start in the right direction, just right there. Okay, that's awesome. I, I think that is a positive start in the right direction, just right there.
I'm in agreement. All right, so are we ready for policy fifty-two ten? I'd like to go ahead and knock out the remaining, or the revisited five thousands.
So I think that Crystal may have forwarded my email from yesterday. I, I sent, let me see which one, the distribution and display of non-school materials, fifty-two ten, I sent that one along. The solicitations and advertising, there was the, the issue of whether or not the PTA could sell advertising.
Yeah, and, and booster clubs.
And booster clubs. And I asked McKenna, because I, I was not able to find any examples of districts that did that and was a little bit concerned about allowing just one particular set of individuals or groups to sell advertising in, in the school. And so I asked, reached out to McKenna and she's not aware of anyone that did that and raised the question of whether or not PTAs. There's some non, apparently some non-commercial language. So what I, I reached out to Mary Hazel to see whether or not she had, could tell me what was actually being done in practice. So the last two, fifty-two twenty and fifty-two forty were not ready yet because you just needed some more information. Fifty-two ten is ready to go forward.
Okay. And just to follow up, we, we do understand that is the practice, but, and I understand that from Al O'Brien and the high schools, but had not had a chance to, to kind of make any recommendations related to it.
I think the concern is just, you know, allowing an outside entity to have commercial activity going on in the schools. And, and I think it would help to understand a little bit more about what actually occurs in practice and how it is related to the school so that we could justify. Because when you open up something like that, even though it's commercial speech, advertising, it is, you know, does fall under the First Amendment and you don't want to be creating a situation where some groups are allowed and some groups are not. And, and, and it just need, because I couldn't find any examples of anyone else that has a policy that does this. I need it, I, I just feel like it needs a little more thought.
Fifty-two ten we're talking about?
No, fifty-two ten is ready to go.
Okay.
If the, the advertising, fifty-two forty and then fifty-two twenty went along with it. I think you did have Ms. Crable a question about fifty-two ten though regarding the, the non-school sponsored field trips in policy thirty-three twenty.
Yes.
And so if you wanted to have, allow the, let me see, let me pull up thirty, thirty-three twenty again. If you wanted to allow that distribution or, or promotion of non-school field trips, you would need to add that to this policy, so that might be something you wanted to do. So non-school sponsored trips in policy thirty-three twenty says that they will be promoted or advertised in accordance with the fifty-two forty and fifty-two ten. So you could add to this fifty-two ten language that would allow that. I don't know if you can scroll down to that section. Because right now it only allows non, for nonprofit or school-related activities.
Yeah, because it says on the distribution and display of standards for non-school materials, that would be letter C. It is happening right now. There are a number of our teachers who in, in acting in their capacity as people, you know, not school system employees, take students, New Hanover County school students, as well as students from other schools on trips, mainly abroad, you know, or over the summer, and those are advertised in our schools. And it's mainly the high schools. I've not seen it in middle school ever, except for maybe people-to-people, because people-to-people does have middle school. So if, if we're saying we're not do, if we're not allowed to do that, then we have a lot of homework to do and, and with, within our schools. Because it is, those trips are being taken and they are being led by school system employees in a non-school system capacity.
So I think that you would need to, as a policy committee and then as a board, decide whether or not you wanted those things to be, or those trips to be promoted or allowed to be promoted in the schools. And they could add language, so you could add language under C, that would be, is it C?
Yes, it, it says distribution and display standards for non-school materials. That is letter C. That's what I thought it would go under.
So it would go down, but if you can go down. I can, I'm, I'm trying to scroll down and I can't do it all by.
Or D, where it says procedures for requesting distribution or display of non-school materials.
I'm going to just pull it up here so I can look at it and find the right.
Yeah, I would just simply say that I don't think we should be doing that. And if it is going on, I think we, would be my recommendation that we stop it. So I would add language to insert it. I think it needs to stop.
I mean, the, the concern is only that you don't want parents to think that this is school-sponsored. And, and have some sort of expectation that it is school-sponsored. But you've already permitted it under policy thirty-three, you've permitted those types of trips under thirty-three twenty. So what you need to decide is how much and, and what type of advertising or motion do you want to allow in the schools?
Well, what I have seen in the high schools is like giant posters that announces the trip and it's, and most of them say pretty clearly, this is not a school-sponsored event. So I, I would hate for us not to be able to let students know about these kind of educational, you know, opportunities, as long as we're clear and say that it's not a school system sponsored thing. I mean, that you don't hand out forms for it, you post up a poster that says this is happening. If you're interested, then you scan this QR code or you call this person, you know, we're not promoting it at all. And the teachers should not be, you know, promoting it in their classrooms.
I had a question along those lines in the same section. Do we, do we have a dis, I know other school systems have a disclaimer that actually says that, that, you know, this is not, you know, it's not just somebody that decides to put something, this is not New Hanover County schools, but it's something that actually says that, you know, that we do not, you know, support, blah, 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 you know, all those words. Do we have such a disclaimer that we put on the bottom of, of anything like this?
We do, and the PTAs have been using it for twenty years. It's, you know, and I was hoping that we would put that in here, but I didn't see it. When the chief communication officer or his designee approves materials, it, you have to have the disclaimer on the bottom that says, this does not represent the views of New Hanover County Schools and, or endorsement thereof. I mean, I don't know the exact words, but yeah, I can find it real quick.
And I wonder if we don't want to put that in here, so it is the exact word, the same words all the time. So it's not, you know, this school does it one way or, or that person, you know, that way there, this, you know, this is, this is our disclaimer. We need to put it on anything like this so that it, it covers it, but it's a one time, you know, it's a the same disclaimer for everybody in every situation.
Well, it is, because if you're following the policy to get approval, you, you, they tell you, you must put this on. Here's what it says, the information publication does not represent the views of New Hanover County schools, nor does it constitute or imply endorsement, recommendation, or favoring by the school system. And that is the, that is what I have to do, well, I had to do with, PTAs have to do. And with my work with the Azalea Festival, you know, to advertise our contest in the schools, we have to write that on there. So if you're following the policy that says you have to get permission from the school system, then they're going to tell you, you have to have that. And principals aren't supposed to allow things to go home unless they have a stamp. And they will stamp, you know, approved on things that are approved. So you, they, principals don't have to guess if I really, you know, got approval or not.
Okay, so again, why, why is it not in this policy that, you know, why doesn't clearly, once again, why don't we be clear with it? And say if this is what we, you know, it's not recommend, we require, why isn't, you know, not said in here that that's what we require?
We can.
I mean, I don't know why we wouldn't. You know, that way there, it's not like somebody can't come back and say, well, I, I put something else in there because, you know, that's, that was my understanding of it.
But you won't have a stamp. If you don't put the right thing on, then you don't get a stamp.
But again, we have new principals, so maybe one principal is brand new, I didn't know that, that kind of thing.
So I think, I mean, I, you can certainly add that a, a just, you know, disclaimer language from the chief communications officer is required. Or, you know, you can just, you, you can also, and I think it's important to, to do this, to train the principals about getting approval from the chief communication officer and that that is required under B and it, it's, it's got to be done before anything can be distributed, or A, I'm sorry. So that's in paragraph A, A two, and A three. B, I'm sorry, there, there's so much red on here, it's hard.
I know, it's hard to even tell. Well, I know, I had to go ahead and put yellow highlights.
Yeah, under, under B, but, but either way, you know, you can certainly add language that's required to be included, or you could leave that to the approval process under the chief communications officer.
I, I would, I always recommend leaving those things to, you know.
Procedure.
I, I think though, yeah, I think the, again, I've said this many times, our directive should just be to provide, you know, a direction to the district, and I think this policy satisfies that. And, you know, given that you have to get commu, permission from the communications officer, I wouldn't go any further than that.
Well, and the reason I would not agree with that is simply because, you know, as we have turnover, we've had several turnovers with chief communication officer. So if it's not in the policy, well, you know, this, this one says it's got to be this, this one says it's got to be that. You know, the principals are pulling their hair out because as we, you know, as, as that position does change from time to time, the rules change, that, you know, if it's not in the policy, then it could be anybody's interpretation of that. It could be just, well, principals do whatever you, you know, whatever you deem is appropriate. And, and that new chief, you know, communication officer says that. So, I mean, I think if we're going to say it, let's say it, and I think we should put it, you know, it, it doesn't have to be specific. You know, but it needs to be something, at least a general outline of what needs to be placed in there. I don't think we want to leave it up there, you know, a chief off, a chief communications officer might be learning their role and in, in the school system. So, you know, do we want to say at that point, well, you know, you do, you do whatever you think is right and we'll just agree with you. I think it's, I think it might be better to have something, especially something in, in the legal field like this.
That's my, Ms. Crable, it's up to you.
Well, the, the thing is, the, we don't, this falls back into the same sort of category on what we're supposed to do. We're supposed to provide the high-level guidance and Dr. Faust and his team are supposed to put together the procedures. And just because somebody changes jobs, does it mean that the procedure changes? Until it's been talked about with senior staff and Dr. Faust. So I, I could, I could go with just saying, chief communication officer provides a stamp of approval, you know, or something like that. Or we just say according to, you know, procedure, because that's what we've done in so many other of our policies. And many of the ones I wanted to have more words and was voted no. So this, I mean, I think that we probably should just be consistent because looking at some other counties' policies that are still using new, the NCSBA thing, we are probably one of the most specific school systems out there, you know, about trying to micromanage like everything. That, so that, that's my two thoughts. That I would say we could, could go with leaving it in or leaving it out, maybe saying something about a stamp. But again, even a stamp is down in the weeds of something that we're not supposed to do.
So, and I finally found it, it's, it's B four that says principals in conjunction with the chief communications officers shall adopt procedural guidelines for the distribution of materials. So I think if you were going to add something, that is the section that you would want to add it under, that would make more sense.
And Deborah, I also was thinking about that, in, in that, that exact B four was when, since principals adopt the procedural guidelines, I, I get, I get worried that principals will have too much latitude and that we're not doing the same thing at all schools. Like some groups will feel like they can, if, you know, they'll, we'll, we'll allow it at a Wrightsville Beach, but we won't allow it at Parsley. Or we'll allow it at this high school, but we won't allow it at that, so.
So you could, you could leave that responsibility to the chief communications.
I, I would recommend that, because that's what their job is, in my opinion. But the, Dr. Faust may have a different, you know, thought on that.
So Ms. Stagner, this is Josh, if I could, is the, is the goal here to prevent implied endorsement specifically? Or what, what specifically are we, because this is non, non-school material. So what, can I get an example just to help wrap my arms around? Is it an endorsement issue or perceived endorsement issue if it's a non-schooler or what type of situation are we attempting to prevent?
I mean, the, the display, that comes under section, yeah, section B, distribution and display by non-students. So anything that's by non-students, even if it is, so if you then go up to B one, distribution and display of school-sponsored or curriculum-related publications are permitted. And then just, so it lists all the different types of materials that are permitted. And I think that four is just, we are going to come up with procedures that, that would include, you know, when they can be distributed, where, what, you know, pre-approval stamps, disclaimers, et cetera, need to be included and on what materials. So the procedural guidelines are going to be very broad. You don't want things to be, you know, handed out during the, during class time because that's disruptive to class, regardless of what materials are. So those sorts of, of procedures.
And it was also my understanding when this went, when this went into play, because it's about maybe like fifteen years old, was so that we were not establishing, we were not letting our schools become a public forum. That like a NASCAR, you know, that you just, everybody could put whatever they want in the schools. That we were trying to keep it clean and not establish a public forum so that we wouldn't be seen as discriminating against different groups for, you know, putting things out.
And, and that's why you have the limitation under B three to, to limit the types of groups and organizations that can permit. And again, to go back to the first question, it would be under B three if you wanted to add, you know, non-school sponsored field trips, because you've got, you know, those are the categories that are permitted to come in and distribute or display information. But the guidelines would, would deal with not just what materials can be distributed, but also where and when. So you don't have them, you know, disrupting class time or instructional time.
And also too, in that, in that B three, the list, what about, I mean, I don't see PTAs, PTOs, you know, parent support organizations, booster clubs listed in, because they're nonprofit organizations. I know we address them later, but they are nonprofit organizations. And then also I don't see anything in there about before and after-school care providers that are for-profit.
So again, those are decisions that the board, so I think that PTA, PTO would fall under B. It says including but not limited to.
Okay.
But if, if they're, but well, are they offering educational, recreational, maybe they're not, maybe they need to have their own, you know, their own, you know, separate category.
Well, they do offer educational, I mean, that, that's what part of their missive, mission is. So I, I, if we're going to do including but not limited to, I would definitely put parent support organizations in there. Because that means PTA, PTO, athletic boosters, band boosters, you know, choral boosters, you know, academic boosters. So that people are clear that a parent support organization meets that, meets those requirements.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with that change. And then if there are no other changes, I do.
I want to, I want to add a dress before and after-school care providers. You know, are we going to allow every, every per, everyone to advertise in all of our, not advertise, but to send home notes, if they, you know, letters? To me, that is an educational, recreational, cultural, you know, recreational, educational service. The, and I know that, I know we want parents to be able to go to work and have their kids taken care of.
So this is nonprofit. So this is nonprofit. I think if you, you may have some, you know, for-profit.
Right, and they're definitely for-profit.
So you would, you may want to add and consider categories that would be for-profit businesses that provide services, you know, or after-school or daycare services, something like that.
Right, that, that's what I'm proposing, to add another letter, either make it a D and move community colleges down to be an E, but I would like to, for us to consider adding before, before and after-school care providers.
Well, I think we'd also have to add tutoring services at that same place, then. Because you can't, you know, what happens if a child needs tutoring? I mean, that, that, that could be just as important as before or after-school care.
I think we allow things like, at least we have in the past, you know, Huntington Learn, you know, Huntington Learning Services. I, I, the, they're a for-profit, yeah, so I guess we would have to talk about that. A lot of, a lot of these things are run through the PTAs anyway, so that we don't have to make it, that the PTA takes on the endorsement issue. And I'm using PTA generically.
So have we made the changes? Are we good?
What, what do you want to do, Nelson? Pete, and Pete and I have weighed in, what do you want to do? Do we want to, and Deborah, what do you suggest? I mean.
I, I think adding something for PTAs and PTOs would be appropriate, and then a small section for, for profit.
So I can, you know, I can certainly come up with some language, and I, I don't know if this is on for, this would not be going to, to the board tonight, correct?
Correct.
But add language to allow for, distribution of materials from limited for-profit businesses that would be tutor, before and after-school care, and tutoring, and for-profit companies that offer non-school-sponsored field trips. Are those the only three?
I also would, now, I, I would actually have to add, you know, counseling services, because there are so many. If, if a parent comes in and says, you know, my child needs counseling, you know, that, that, that probably would be another thing that, you know, that we would, you know, not, not recommend necessarily, but at least have their information, say, in the office or something.
So I, I think, and Julie Barnum is much smarter on this than I am. I, I think that when a student or family needs counseling, there are referrals that are made, sort of individually, one-on-one to families through the, the counseling system. I don't, you know, this would be, are we going to allow people to hand out or put on a table flyers, which is a little bit different?
I would, I would agree with that. The referrals are, are pretty specific, based on student need, and partnerships that already exist that support, whether it's school-based services or not.
Okay, fair enough. Then I will take that part out. I'll defer to Ms. Barnum on that.
Okay, so with those changes, are we in agreement to move policy fifty-two-ten on to the regular agenda for first reading in August?
I just have one last question. In the first paragraph, when we say "school officials," does school officials mean school building officials, or does it mean admin, such as the chief information officer or superintendent? Because we refer to school officials a couple different times.
Yeah, and I actually concur with Ms. Crable on that, because in section C of, I had, you know, under F, one F, it says contains informations inaccurate, misleading, and false. You know, I don't think principals, speaking as a former principal, has, have time to go through and research and see, is that true, or is that, you know, so, I mean, that, that's a great question. So, yeah, I was at C, one, and, and materials are not screened for viewpoint, the view, the reviewer, and again, who is the reviewer, shall prohibit the distribution of blah, 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 all the way down to F, where it says contains informations inaccurate, misleading, or false. So if we're saying that, are we saying that the principals are going to have to, you know, go through everything, and then maybe have to do research on it all, and that kind of thing?
I would say that, you know, that would have part of a principal's job, because if it's in their building, if someone just puts something up, we wouldn't know here at the district if it's up in the building. So we would also want the principal, I would assume that it would just, it would have to do with the principal, system principal, if it's brought to their attention, to make sure that the, the advertisement is, you know, if it is correct, because we would not want something in the building that's not correct, and we're held liable for something.
Absolutely. Okay. Okay, thank you, sir.
In letter D two, it says within five school days, the principal, we've left out the word "or," because we've, we've struck it out so many times in, in the, in the very first line. D two.
I'll make that, I'll make that correction.
Okay.
All right, anything else?
So this one is, is not moving forward right now?
I believe fifty-two-ten is ready to be moved forward as amended fifty-two-twenty and fifty-two-forty are not.
So I will make, add these additions, and recirculate it to the committee to make sure that I've accurately reflected the changes that were requested.
Okay, and, and then we just comment on it?
And, and then if, if I've gotten everything right, then it can move forward to the next, you know, for first reading, or frustrating at the next board meeting.
Okay, the, Nelson, be, be, before we move on, I did want to just make a comment, since we're not really ready to discuss fifty-two-forty, but I wanted to, since folks were having a little bit of question about what we're doing, is that there are, this is how it has operated and how it is operating now, just so you'll know when you're doing your research, is that school, parent support organizations, PTAs and booster clubs, sell advertising by invitation, you know, that's, or, or by soliciting on outside of school. Similarly, as to what your books do. And then the school makes the decision, like, where you can put the advertising, either in a athletic program, on a fence, at a stadium, on the wall, in a gym. And, and PTAs and, and PTOs, other parent support organizations hang banners that say, you know, Stephanie, you know, is in the hundred-dollar club, you know, so, and Stephanie's business, or Stephanie's business is in the hundred-dollar club. So that is what is currently going on. And that is a, a moneymaker for the booster clubs and the parent support organizations, and things like that.
So it's really, you know, instead of the, the, the school has delegated its ability to sell advertising to the parent support organization?
Yes, because, but some schools, the athletic department will, will do their, and, and teams will do their own. Some schools, they delegate it to, or they ask that the parent support organizations do it, because school system employees are not supposed to be, or not allowed, and I don't know what the policy is, to go out and do that. So that's kind of what's happening. And then in, downward, it says, "school officials may accept donations of equipment and supplies that contain advertising messages, but they have to follow the, the gifts and the quests." So some of the things there are, like, a company will say, I will donate, you know, one thousand stadium cups for your school to use, but I'm going to put your logo on it, but I'm going to put my logo on the back. Or they'll do seat cushions, you know, I'm going to put my logo on it.
Thanks.
That's helpful, Ms. Crable, to understand how it, how it's.
How it's working, yes. And then, so, and then, like, again, when you said, when it says process to request and advertise, you know, in, in that one, you know, it says you may approve it. The, and that's again, you know, you got to get the stamp. That's why I wrote it myself, you know, the note, you know, that it, the, the principal ultimately has the final say-so, even if the boosters get a thousand dollars from some company, if it's inappropriate advertising in our school, the principal will go, ah, no, I don't think we want that company, please tell them thank you, and maybe they can volunteer or, or contribute in some other way.
And that's the, I mean, that's the, the rub. We, we have to be sure the guidelines are clear enough that you are not, you know, then discriminating among different speakers. And we've, you know, we've had, I've had cases like that, exactly with, with signs on fences, and, and, you know, decisions being made not to allow some advertisers, and then you get a, get a lawsuit. So, these are such tricky areas, but let me, let me work on that a little bit more, and I, I will have it for the next policy committee meeting. At least a recommendation, or, or some answers about whether you, you know, need to make any changes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so moving on to policy six thousand, support services. I thought this was pretty straightforward, but if our assistant superintendent has anything to add, please do so.
This looks good to me. I like the simplicity.
I love simplicity.
The only comment I had on that was in the legal references, where we referenced Leandro, Leandro versus the state in nineteen ninety-seven. Do we not want to reference Leandro's most recent ruling of June the eighth?
So the citation is to, this is to the North Carolina Supreme Court decision that established the right to, the opportunity for sound basic education. The, and then the statute that has, you know, codified that. The, the recent ruling was from the trial court judge, which is in a published, I mean, it's, you know, it's not from one of our appellate courts. It certainly is important, and, but I think that it's probably, if you were to list all the different decisions of Leandro here, you would have another page, if you list all the intermediate orders.
So this is, this is just the initial, that we have to do it, right?
This is the, this is the source of the constitutional obligation, as well as the statute that came around. The General Assembly said, we're going to put this in statute.
Okay. Okay, that's fine.
Mr. Wilderbohr, you have anything?
None on this one, sir.
Okay. Policy six thousand will go on for first reading. Policy sixty-one-hundred, goals of student health.
The only comment I had there was, in number one, to encourage the physical well-being of all students. Do we not want to say physical and mental well-being of all students?
Psychological with that?
Do we want to say mental or psychological?
Well, whatever the school lingo is.
I would suggest, um, physical, social, and emotional.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Barnum. Ms. Barnum, did you have anything else here?
I did not.
Okay.
All right.
So, is, are, are those words okay to use?
Is, is that a question for me?
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
And perhaps Dr. Faust from a, the state, or maybe Deborah can add, the State School Boards Association training that we did, they took social and emotional learning off of our, off of our agenda because of controversy.
But you know, that doesn't sense, because if we look at the ESER dollars, both sides of the chamber voted for us to actually even have social-emotional therapy, or our counselors in our building. We have millions of dollars that we are supposed to spend on social-emotional learning that's given from our state, for those who are actually even saying that social-emotional learning that is tacked on to something, so they're, they're, I mean, they're not consistent in their verbiage, so.
I'm, I'm fine with the words. I just was waiting to, you know, have a bullet come through my window, you know, this afternoon.
We just need to understand that ESER, I think it's two and three, and then actually our summer school money that's given that actually told us what we had to have in our Ignite, Summer Ignite program, they told us that we had to have these, so.
And in, in addition, we have state board policy S H L T dash zero-zero-three, which is the school system mental health plan that requires our social-emotional learning components be presented to you and approved, and then submitted to the state, which is actually in the, in one of the next policies.
Right.
So we actually, we have a requirement to teach social and emotional learning from both the state and the federal level. So I, I think that those are exactly the words we should use.
Perfect. And so then, can we put that in a cross-reference somewhere?
Add the state board policy S H L T zero-zero-three.
Whatever Ms. Barnum says we should add, yes.
I also think we should probably, since you mentioned that, you know, from the, the federal government, if we have, can we cross-reference you in that? Let's get all the backing we can get.
So whatever we need to put in there, you guys, I mean, I'm not an expert. And so you guys are, so whatever you think we need to do, I think we should cross-reference that, so that we just make sure that we're all, we're all clear. I mean, I'm, I'm fine with the words, but having, you know, legislative support is always helpful.
Well, we can cross, we can add the state board policy to the legal references, and then cross-references at the, the other policy that Julie just referenced, that had to do with the school wellness plan.
Yeah. Yep.
And that came through legislation before it became state board policy, so it was also a Senate bill.
But Ms. Barnum, what, what did you mention as far as the federal level?
Oh, Dr. Faust was mentioning that, but our ESER funding application certainly had allocations available to be used for social-emotional learning, with a high recommendation for that. In, in addition, we have the social-emotional learning piece included under IDEA, which is the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, another federal requirement. So there's, there's definitely a, a federal strong encouragement, to the point that dollars are allocated. And then there's state law and state board policy.
So Deborah, can you just add in what we need to add in?
I, I will follow up with Julie to make sure that we list anything that might be applicable.
Okay.
And so I'll get those citations correct.
Thank you. I, I would really appreciate that.
All right, are we good to move on from sixty-one-hundred with those changes and cross-reference?
I am.
Excellent. Moving on to policy sixty-one. Organization of student health services, again, pretty simplistic. Ms. Barnum, did you have anything?
No, this one is, it's, it's really kind of just that, that boilerplate statement that we will engage in, in these services, and of course, we go way beyond that.
Yes, we do. Ms. Crable?
Yeah, I got one. A three, any employee designated to provide health care services must receive appropriate training.
Are you, are you in the right policy, Pete? Are you in sixty-one-ten?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm the wrong one. I'm getting ahead of myself. Yep, no, no, you're right. Eh, sorry. Sixty-one-twenty, I have something to say, but sixty-one-ten, I'm good with. Sorry.
Can y'all hear me?
Yep, we're good. Sixty-one-ten's good.
All right, moving sixty-one-ten on to the agenda for first reading. Sixty-one-twenty, student health services. Mr. Wilderbohr, I know you have something, but as usual, I like to begin with our assistant superintendents. Ms. Barnum, do you want to begin here, please? Did you have anything?
Just, um, thank you. I just want to highlight, um, on the second page, that is the section I was referring to with regard to, um, the citation for social emotional learning, where we, in this policy, have included, um, state board policy S H L T dash zero zero three. So it's included in this one, but, um, we'll cross-reference to the other one. But I don't have anything else for this one.
So we're, we're going to cross-reference this sixty-one-twenty back on to sixty-one-hundred as well? Okay.
Mr. Wilderbohr.
All right, uh, just a quick question on, uh, A three. Any employee designated to provide healthcare services must receive appropriate training. I just need, if, if you would, to share, Ms. Barnum, you probably are the, the expert on this one. Is that like, so the school nurse is going to give you a quick once-over? Or are we sending them out for training? Is there documentation of said training? La di, la di, yeah. And I'm sure there is, but I just wanted to make sure.
Yes. They're under the, um, requirements for the school nurse training. They have to follow the, the, their School Health Practice Act, which requires that if they delegate any type of, um, health service, and usually they reserve the more invasive services, but also medication administration. When they delegate that, which is kind of, that's, that's the term under their license, they have to provide the appropriate training consistent with that type of, um, service. So if it's medication administration, they train them on that and how to log it. They log the training, but they also train them and, um, audit how they're logging it. If it's something more, um, significant such as, uh, G tube feeding, they are, um, assessing whether the person they're training is capable of administering the service appropriately. And if not, they look for a different delegate. So it's a very active process and it's well documented.
Excellent. Thank you so much for that. And I did have one other question, um, on B, section B, the second paragraph. This is superintendent will, uh, report to the Department of Public Instruction. Do we also receive that? I, you know, I wasn't on the board last September, so I'm not sure. Is that something that the superintendent shares with us also? Or you'd share that with us, or?
That is actually what I presented to you last month.
Okay.
It was the
And we approved it, yeah.
It was the, it was, um, the school mental health and social emotional learning plan that went through all the pieces that we're going through and then, um, submit that to DPI. So that you will find that in, um, simply, in for last month.
Awesome. Thank you.
I, I just had one question, Julie. I know that, um, I reviewed some contracts or MOUs with the health clinics, the WHAT health clinics. And I didn't know if, if there was any need to reference, um, health clinics in this policy.
Um, I would, I would be fine if we were more specific. I think that also kind of aligns with, um, you know, sixty-one-ten, the organization of services. I think it kind of goes into, to all of it. I, I'm not opposed to it. I don't know that it would necessarily be required, um, because that's something that's additional and optional that we do. So it's not necessarily a requirement, but if we, if the board, it is the, um, the, um, pleasure of the board to add that in as additional, um, services that we commit to, I think that's fine.
Yeah, I, I would be for that because to me, it's a valuable MOU that we have, um, for our families, and then our staff, you know, to take advantage of that, those services. So it would be nice to, I don't want to say give them credit, but, you know, acknowledge the relationship.
I would say if we do that, we also need to consider adding in the, um, like in general, our school health services, um, provided by our school nurses. And then the, um, for those WHAT clinics, also the inclusion of, um, those same type of services at, um, our alternative programming. So I can come up with a bullet for that if you'd like.
Yes. I would like.
Yeah, thank you.
And would you want that? I think that would go in section A.
Yeah, that makes sense.
All right, with those changes, is everybody satisfied with policy sixty-one-twenty?
Now, I have, I have a question in, um, A one. It's all stuff that we add. And so where it says, in cases where parents do not provide requested information, reasonable attempts must be made by the school administrators to obtain such information. Would that reasonable attempt allow, um, a school nurse to reach out to a parent? Or does it have to come from a school system employee to reach out?
By our contract, our nurses can operate as employees. I know that that's different when we're talking about from the finance perspective and payroll and that kind of thing and from human resources, but for the purposes of taking action for, um, delivering the services for students, very often, if the teacher and other support staff have tried that, that's when the nurse will reach out, as another effort to obtain that medical emergency information.
Is that something that we need to outline and, and be specific on? Since they are not our employees and they're not school administration?
I would, I would lean on Deborah for that. I'm okay if it, if it includes, um, contracted school health staff.
I, I, I think that the F, you know, reasonable efforts must be made by school administrators would cover, you know, their instructions to different staff members and, and school nurses to, to make those efforts. So I don't know that you have to do an exhaustive list there.
Okay. So, um, I had, I don't know where this goes, but, um, when we're, when we're, I, I, I've made a note to myself, you know, near, you know, seven and eight, about where do substitutes come in? And I think it's more number eight on the, the, the plans that they, that substitutes are left by teachers have information about students, um, confidentiality of, you know, different kinds of things. Is that just implied when we say any employee who violates confidentiality will be? Or do we need to say like, including substitute teachers? They are our employees, but.
I, I would think if we, if we, uh, or if you extended it to substitute teachers, you might need to extend it to other types of employees that might also, um, have access to those spaces. So custodial staff coming in to clean a classroom and might see a file. I, I, I don't know that you would want to, um, isolate them, but that's just my opinion.
Okay, that's fine. That's fine.
I agree with that.
Okay, I'm good with that.
Any other questions? Okay, hearing none. Policy sixty-one twenty-five will be placed on the August third agenda for first reading.
Sorry, that's sixty-one-twenty.
Sixty-one-twenty.
Sixty-one-twenty, I'm sorry. Sixty-one-twenty-five is what we are on now, administering medicine to students. Uh, we'll begin with Ms. Barnum and Ms. Fagner.
Um, again, this one is really straightforward, um, and aligns specifically to the, um, North Carolina, um, Joint, um, School Health, um, Policy Manual that is provided by our program manual that's provided by DPI and public health.
I know this doesn't happen often, but we do have probably around a thousand students each year who are over the age of eighteen. Do they still need consent to take over the counter medication in our schools?
Well, I, I didn't hear the last part of your question.
Do our adult students, our eighteen-year-old students still need, uh, signature with parental consent to take Tylenol?
We, we generally do, um, stay with the, your student through the, um, there are some things that change. But I mean, if it, if we had a real sticky situation, we might say, okay, fine, you can take something. But generally, we stick with their students while they're, while they're with us. You know, and then, once they hit that age of majority and there, there are different, um, rights and steps we go through, but not specific to administration of medication.
Okay, and this is all governed by North Carolina state law anyway.
And the school health program manual.
Okay, I didn't really have anything else. Ms. Crable, Mr. Wilderbohr?
Yeah, I had one in one, two, three, the fourth paragraph down where it talks about, um, CBD and THC, is strictly prohibited at school. We probably don't need to write this in now, but are we thinking about what happens if medical marijuana laws passes? And what will we do?
So my guess is that the, um, the School Board Association would provide an, an update if that were to occur. Right now, it is written in such a way as to define not specific products, but things that would be, um, you know, approved and available by the FDA. So if, if different things are approved, then that would, that would not need to have, um, a, a revision of the policy. But I, I would think that if, um, there was a significant change, medical marijuana, for example, that, that the School Board Association will come out with an update to the policy.
Okay.
And, and I would anticipate, um, some clarification in the school health program manual that is that, that joint document between DPI, public health and, um, the state board.
Okay, and then one last question on A two F, which is on page three, um, about halfway down. All school personnel who will be administering medications must receive appropriate training. I guess who does that training and who documents, um, and maintains that training?
So it, it's, um, pretty much what I shared, excuse me, shared with Mr. Wilderbohr, um, in one of the last policies. Excuse me. Our school nurses are the ones that are required to provide that training. And so, um, for some medications and for most medications that our students take, our school nurse delegates that to, uh, or can delegate that to a staff member who is capable. And part of their training is determining if the staff member, um, is capable of doing that and is capable of responding should there be an adverse reaction. So it also depends on the severity of the medication or intensity. And then, so our school nurses maintain a log of who they've trained. They also audit the log of medication administration and, um, medication storage. Because after you administer, you administer the time, you administer, you know, and sign off and all this stuff. But you're also keeping account of the medication. So there's a very, um, strict process.
Okay, yeah, I, I've seen that in action. I was just, you know, like counting out the pills and, you know, all that kind of good stuff to make sure that we, we have what we say we have.
Yes, and that falls under the, um, school nurses RN license, um, to maintain that, um, supervision of that process.
Okay.
Okay, and I, I'm going to have to play devil's advocate, um, and only because I've seen this happen. So I, I wanted to just double-check and see if we want to change the wording just slightly or not. But, uh, section one B, a healthcare practitioner. I've actually seen where chiropractors, and I love chiropractors, I go to a chiropractor, but where they, you know, like they try to sign off on medical, uh, physicals and this kind of thing. Obviously, that's not acceptable. But I think that leaving it as healthcare practitioner might be, say, a chiropractor says, yes, you need to take vitamin A one or something like that, uh, you know, or something that, you know, or back to CBD or whatever else. I'm wondering if we might want to limit the healthcare practitioner label to, uh, D O M D P A and, uh, and was it N, nurse practitioner, NP? Or do we just want, we, and I'm fine leaving it as healthcare practitioner, but just knowing we may end up bumping over that road at some point.
I don't think we would, I would not consider, I don't think our, uh, school personnel would consider a directive from a chiropractor as qualifying as somebody who practices medicine.
So the, the RN in the building would, um, be reviewing all medication orders and they have to follow, um, what's in the school health program manual. And there may be different types of providers for different types of medication or, or, um, yet medication orders or, um, um, authorizations. So, um, while I would agree with you, I would, if, if clarifying, I would say that it should be consistent with the school health program manual. There has, there has been debate within not, not only medication orders or, um, medical documentation, but there's also been medical evaluation debate regarding, um, identification of a disability and what type of provider needs to be able to sign off on a certain type of a disability. So I would say it should be consistent with the school health program manual and that way that goes through so much more detail and an algorithm, um, that we wouldn't necessarily want to put in policy.
Okay.
Well, like I say, I'm, I'm finding the way, I just wanted to, I've, I've seen it happen. I've seen people show up with notes from chiropractors, so I just wanted to, but, uh, whatever y'all think, I will go along with.
All right, um, yeah, I'm, I'm fine keeping it, um, but it's up to Ms. Crable.
No, I'm fine, um, based on Julie's explanation, I think we're good.
Okay. If there is nothing else on policy sixty-one twenty-five administering, administering medicine to students, we can move on to policy sixty-one thirty-five headlights. Everybody's absolute favorite topic. I think we all agree. I, I, I danced this dance many times when my kids were younger.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have anything to, um, to offer on this one. Just, you know, it's a head-scratcher.
Well, on A, on A three, we, we need a period.
Yeah, and, and A two, I'm going to have to just jump into the inevitable question. So, you know, little Johnny comes up, he's got head lice. The principal says he, um, he calls parents, parents say, well, we can't come pick him up. But he cannot ride the school bus. So what do we do? I mean, I, I don't want to leave principals in a, scratching their head, as it were.
I was a little confused by that too, when it says encouraged to pick up the student. I didn't know that that was optional when it came to headlights.
Yeah, so, um, I don't want to step too far outside of my training as an educator and not a healthcare provider. I know sometimes I, I pretend to be one, but I'm not trying to practice medicine. That is unlawful. But I, I will say that, um, according to our public health guidelines and the resources within our public health, um, while headlights is an absolute nuisance, it doesn't fall under, um, requirements of, um, like, uh, communicable disease. So while if, you know, left unattended for long periods of time and could certainly cause complications, it's no different than others, um, you know, other type of situations. But it's not listed as a communicable disease, so there's no requirement.
So how come they can't ride the bus then? Yeah.
That was local determination. So my understanding with this policy, because there's not, um, I mean, go back to the, to the wording of this one. It's not a part of the School Board Association manual, but it was, this draft was created in accordance with New Henry County Schools drafts in the past or policy in the past. So I think it's up to your determination, but I'd let Deborah weigh in on that.
Yeah, Julie, I, I will give all the same caveats. I'm not, um, a doctor, um, but the research that I have done on headlights, um, in the past, it is my understanding that it is not required for students to leave school and it is not required that they be, um, barred from any sort of activities because of lies. They're encouraged to be treated. And if it's left untreated, that may be a sign of neglect that would require reporting to DSS. But, um, so the fact that the student may not ride the school bus, I, I share the concerns that that may leave a student just waiting for a parent to come pick them up. So you, that's a determination that was in your old policy that you could, or, you know, you could change.
And I, I see that, you know, the, the value maybe, you know, because kids on the buses, to be honest, I've watched a lot of bus videos and, you know, they, they are close to each other and, and this and that and the other thing. But I mean, we, we also don't want to leave our, our principals, uh, or administrators with a child, uh, at school and we, we bar them from the bus only because of headlights and then they have no way to get home. You know, we, we have unfortunately situations where mom, you know, mom or mom and dad work or mom and dad, you know, they can't get off from work or they don't have a car. I mean, we've had situations like that or, and so then the child is, you know, then, then you, and I, you, you don't want to have a, especially an elementary child left to school until nine o'clock at night or then you put the principal in a quandary because, well, you know, the only way to get the child home is, I gotta drive him, but I can't drive him because that's not fair, you know, that's not light right either. So it becomes, you know, uh, So it becomes, you know, I don't want to put a policy or continue to have a policy in place that has no, you know, no answer to it, so.
I I would recommend getting rid of that sentence and allowing students to ride the bus, but then my other question is when they return to school, if they have lice, they're not allowed to go back to school, even though we've just said it's not a it it's not in the category of communicable disease and they can stay at school after they find lice. So I'm just a little confused about that sentence.
Did you see that sentence in here?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's head lice was, when the student arrives at a school, the school nurse or principal.
Oh, students will be sent home. I see that. Again, all of this is up to the board's determination, so this, this is quite a hot topic very often. Keeping in mind, and and we have to, we have to remind ourselves, it's a nuisance, not a communicable disease. So my my recommendation from from practice, I would, I would like to answer, I can't think of a time where we've had a student stay at school until nine o'clock because they didn't have a ride. I mean, we've always, we're always able to figure things out, and I will not to throw him out into the conversation, but Mr. Anderson is is quite the problem solver whenever we have situations where transportation's a concern. But especially case by case like this, I think it is, you know, certainly something to consider. This is, this is a concern of a lot of parents. This is a concern of a lot of teachers in a classroom, but also weighing that with being able to be in the classroom, not wanting a kid to be socially isolated or physically isolated. It's a tough balance and, you know.
Well, I I'm just kind of worried about if this is not in that category, I'm worried about legally, can we keep a student from school? Ms. Stagner?
Well, that is, I think, an unanswered question. Many, again, the public health guidance is that students do not need to be removed from school, but you have outraged parents if their children get head lice at school. And so many districts have adopted policies that require a student to go home and be treated before they're able to return to school. And then if they are remain untreated and it appears that that may be some sign of neglect, then DSS may have to be involved. And as a practical matter, I have not dealt with that situation and had to, had to defend a decision to send a student home. But the, you know, the, I've researched the case law and the the regulations and and all the resources I have been able to find, and it's just not clear that there's a legal obligation one way or the other.
And in dialogue with our public health staff, while there is no requirement for a student to be removed from school because it's a communicable disease, there is the, and again, I guess that's the unanswered question on what's the right of the district to have that student removed. And then you can, you you look at, you know, does this create a chaotic instructional situation? Hopefully not, but we, we generally don't run into serious conflict with these. We have amazing support staff that really help parents with using treatment and then getting the kid back really quickly and not missing school because of head lice. So I'm, I'm comfortable with, you know, the way Ms. Stagner, you know, shared, you know, it's, it's about encouraging for treatment, working with the parent to to make sure they've had access to whatever kind of treatment they need. And then if it is something that's untreated, referring that as potentially a sign of neglect.
So am I to understand then that since this is a nuisance and not a communicable disease, it wouldn't be any sort of HIPAA violation for everyone in the class to know that Stephanie has head lice and now Stephanie can be bullied and ostracized and made fun of, et cetera, et cetera?
Yeah, that that communication isn't done.
It wouldn't be a HIPAA violation. It would be potentially FERPA, but but i- if you, if you notify parents in the classroom, you wouldn't notify them that a particular student had lice. You would notify them that there was a potential exposure. I've also seen policies that say if there's, you know, more than one student in a classroom, then then the parents will be notified. If it's just one student, then there's no notification. And again, I think that's a local decision so that if one kid is absent, everyone doesn't know who it is.
Right.
And and I'll be honest, I've seen both sides of this equation. I actually had a teacher come to me at one point saying we need to close the whole school because we had head lice in a classroom, so. But on the other hand, I have seen parents that are outraged that, you know, why, you know, why wasn't, why, you know, why weren't there more things done in the classroom if there were? You know, you know, an outbreak of, you know, two or three or four people that had head lice in the classroom. So I have actually seen both sides of that, the the equation.
So do we want to change anything within one day of the identification, then we send a letter home?
No, I would, I would like to keep that, but I would, I would like to change the the bus. I think we should get rid of that sentence.
I would concur.
And I have to be honest with you all, I feel very uneasy about voting on this policy as a bald thirty-eight-year-old man.
Mr. Boyer, I was, I would just add, I was looking for our procedures because honestly, I I'm not aware that we have turned any students away from riding the bus, you know, due to head lice. But I couldn't, I couldn't put my hands on those procedures, but I I'm fine with you deleting that.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. All the more reason to do it. I appreciate that.
So this is not head lice oriented, but tell me if it's even analogous. When a classroom gets, has a COVID case, parents are not notified, and so they don't have the opportunity to keep their own kids home. Is is the difference there? Because one is a nuisance and one is a communicable disease?
So the difference is really that we're following the recommendations and requirements from public health and as they receive their recommendations and requirements from the state. The communication regarding the contact tracing regarding COVID is very different because it's a communicable disease that is very specifically contact traced, and folks are identified individually that they have been in contact or been potentially been exposed and provided one-on-one recommendations for next steps. But so it's actually much more specific. It's not a broad stroke communication. It's a very specific communication. And so also with regard to communicating with only the right people and not creating a panic. So with with head lice, it's a more generic communication to say, not that it's more significant or less significant, but it's a very, I mean, it's less significant in that it's not a communicable disease. It's a generic communication to say, hey, this has happened in our classroom, but it's not contact traced. So COVID is contact traced very specifically and one-on-one contacts are made with families. With head lice, it's a, hey, heads up, there potentially could be head lice exposure in your classroom.
Okay, so that, in in letter B, the sentence that says if a student has not been, when the student comes back to school, he's checked, and if a student has not been treated for lice or lice are present, the student will be sent home. So didn't we just say that they could stay?
I'd probably.
I think that this, I mean, the statement was that they, there's no legal requirement to send them home, but that's a, you know, a decision that is made at the district level. And as Julie talked about, making sure that there's lots of support for the parents to get the treatment that they need.
Well, that's what I was, since we're the one making the, recommending the decision to the whole board, do we want to take that line out or do we want to leave that line in?
I think we should probably leave it in because as Ms. Barnum said, we're not running into a problem. So you take that out and talk about it and people are gonna ask more questions.
Suppose some schools send a kid home and don't let them in, and some schools go, it's okay, come on. I mean, it has to be handled consistently and.
Obviously, they can send them home.
No, it says will be sent home. It's not can be sent home. We were saying that where they will.
According to the policy, they will be sent home.
And you just said that we don't want to send them home. We we want to make it, we want to give them the option.
I I don't think that we're running into a problem where students are missing significant time. And I think that if we just keep it the way it is, I think that would be, that would be my recommendation, just keep it the way it is. Because you're gonna get so many questions if you bring this up and say, you know, oh, wait, people can go back to school with lice. I think you're gonna get a lot more of a problem than it's worth.
I don't see that any different if we're saying we may not ride the bus, and we took out the may not ride the bus.
Mr. Wildabore?
I I knew I was gonna be asked about this one. Again, I see both sides of it. I, you know, I want kids in school. But then again, you have to weigh out if you have, and I'm gonna be honest, just from my own experience, if you have two children in in the classroom that have head lice and you, we allow them to stay in school, then you may have other parents say, well, I can't have my children around there, and I've dealt with it and dealt with and dealt with it. So as as Ms. Barnum said, and I think she hit it on the nose, I think it is a nuisance. But I guess I got, if I have to make a choice, I'm gonna have to lean towards having the children in school.
Okay, can we please make that change? And if there's nothing else, we can.
But Julie, is that supportable? And Deborah, is that supportable?
So I'm, I want to understand what the change is. Are you taking out if the student has not been treated for lice, the student will be sent home?
Yes.
And then the.
And the second, and the sentence after it, I think, would probably need to come out as well.
I mean, again, I think it's a local decision. You are sort of in a no-win situation, but there's no absolute legal guidance one way or the other.
So it's up to us to suggest to our other fellow board members, what do you want to do? I mean, it's not like we're making the decision for our district right this minute. We are just saying that this is what we recommend. So if if we don't want to recommend that, then we don't have to, but I'm just trying to be consistent.
And and either way, whether you determine that, and I think Mr. Wildabore makes a good point, too. You might have one student that's out of school, but then if you have that student in school, you might have several students out of school. I think it's a balance, and I think there's a no win on this one. Of course, my thought is always every kid in school all the time. So either way, support services will be required or will be provided to the family on if, you know, if they have means for getting treatment. If they don't have means for getting treatment, we will provide them with whatever resources they need to make sure that they can, they have the resources to eradicate.
Okay, so what did that just mean? Let them come? What did that, what did you just talk me into? What circle did you just run me around?
You know what? Just providing you with information?
Yeah, I know you are. I'm being facetious, right.
I'm sorry.
I think, I think there's a consensus to get rid of those last two sentences in B. First paragraph.
Then I would suggest that that the now remaining last sentence, when the student arrives at school, the school nurse or principal or designated shall examine the student's hair and scalp. I would say and provide resources as necessary, something like that.
Okay.
Thank you for catching. All right, and with those changes, I believe we are good to be moved policy sixty-one thirty-five on.
Twenty-five, twenty-five.
Sixty-one twenty-five.
No, it's thirty-five.
Thirty-five.
Thirty, thirty-five is lice.
No, it says, oh, you, I can't see, boy, I tell you, you're right. But the second page has twenty-five. That's where I saw that. The page behind is.
It does, you're right.
All right, I'm not crazy. I feel better. Well, maybe I am, but anyway.
Sixty-one thirty-five on for first reading at the August third meeting. On to policy sixty-one forty, student wellness. And Ms. Barnum?
This one is also consistent with state board policy. And we have a school health advisory council. We have a coordinator. The part in here that I noticed, and there's also a lot of overlap with operations in here, but the part that I did notice in here is that it is time for the school health advisory council assessment and compliance review for the board. So I've just made that note, but otherwise, I don't, I don't have any any changes or recommendations.
So this policy cannot go forward to the full board unless it's reviewed and and developed with the school wellness committee. And so I don't know if that has already, has the school wellness committee already reviewed this policy and given feedback?
So they have, but they have not done that in a formal meeting. So they've reviewed it separately. So I would prefer that they have. So I've got a note on here that it goes back to them for a meeting that's on the calendar and that being a part of their agenda in minutes.
And I was gonna suggest that because I'm on that team, so I know exactly where we are in in what we have done there, and I've been on that team for a long period of time. And there are several things that that are mentioned in sixty-one forty that are not mentioned in eighty-six twenty. So that caused me for pause, you know, when I was reading through that. And so, yes, I I think it definitely needs to come back. But the other thing that I saw in there was when it says in letter B, insert the board's goals here. I mean, is that what is is what, is is the intent there to put our SHAC goals in there? And then also, too, is the intent to put goals in the school improvement plan because that's where the school wellness plans sit? So all of that, I don't, I didn't see any mention of school improvement plans, you know, in here at all. And that goes back to letter D, number three, where it's, you know, list any additional local goal. I mean, we've got a lot of things to insert and using the support data from the back, you know, the the appendix for that.
So the appendix is definitely the support tool that SHAC or School Health Advisory Council. We we love to use acronyms, but we know that is SHAC.
Right.
They will use the the policy development tool to bring this back to you with SHAC recommendations. And so I know it's weird talking to you as a member of SHAC and then as a member of the policy committee, but if this is the policy draft that you guys are good with, then I think it needs to go back to SHAC for the, for the development of the the measurable policy pieces and then the goals, but then to, and then come back to you. And maybe it doesn't come back to policy committee, maybe it goes back to the full board at that point. So I think you guys can decide that and and lean on Deborah's recommendation. But the, to answer your question about the physical activity requirements and goals and about that being a part of, that's a requirement of school improvement plans. And because of that, those things are listed. So the pieces of this that are requirements of school improvement plans are listed in those. And our NC STAR tool that we have for that supports that compliance.
Okay.
Hold off. No, I said, I, I think we should definitely hold off until we can have that reviewed in a more formal setting.
Actually, let me go ahead and jump in, and I want, I, because my wife and I actually discussed this one. She's obviously a former physical education teacher for the county, and I have a whole bunch of things that I would like to put in, you know, mention now so that maybe that can be part of that SHAC committee. And I know, Ms. Crabill, you are a representative on that, correct?
Well, I am not in a. Well, I am not an official representative as the school board. If you look at A, the, where it says it will be include members of each of the following groups, the school board is listed. And in my whole entire time, there has never been a school board member as an official member of the team. They drop in whenever they want. And then as part of our board policy twenty-two thirty, where it says board committees and where we would have a liaison, that's not named. You know, so we definitely need to decide that. I have been a member of that as a community person, as the parents' PTA council. That they were invited way back, you know, when Ann David was the president and that was back, you know, in the early, early two thousand. So I've been a part of the SHAC team for probably about fifteen years as well through, through the PTA. So, yeah, I definitely wanted to see that. And I'm not certain that we go, we, and I, and I go to board meetings all the time, you know, prior to being a board. And I don't hardly ever remember SHAC ever making a presentation to the board. And then, so, and then when it says the board will periodically, this is in B, under nutrition, the board will periodically measure and report progress towards meeting our goals. So, I mean, that hasn't really happened. And I'm thinking one thing that we could do, I know that Imar, you know, I'm gonna miss Imar, but she had in there, you know, on her own website, you know, the online interactive menus and, you know, the mission of the child nutrition and the people and showing the hits, you know, of parents who are actually using the Going Green, you know, menu email service or using the online menu, interactive menu. We could do a lot more with that. So I think, you know, technology probably should want to take a look at that because that might be an easy measuring tool. Yeah. And so, and, and just simple things like when we're talking about school principals may establish additional rules, you know, for food and beverages to be brought in. I personally would like to see that consistent across all schools so that some schools don't get better snacks, you know, or whatever than the other, or different, you know, pushing the envelope kind of thing.
And as I've said, I have a couple of things I'd like to add in or question. In section D, goals of physical education program, character education is not mentioned in there. That is a vital part of it. The goal of, the goal of, the goal of, why is this not required? I mean, and why are we not going above and beyond the minimums? If you look at it, you know, we should at least maintain a minimum of a hundred and fifty minutes of physical education in middle school. And you'll say that, well, it does says two twenty-five, which is more, but it's also equally divided between health and physical education, which drops the two twenty-five in half. So I think that we should at least say, you know, we don't want to get something started well in elementary school and then kind of peter it out in middle school and even further in high school. I think, you know, movement is, and I think a lot of times we say, well, we're doing recess. Well, if you've ever been out at recess, half the time, you know, we have some kids that are very, very active, some students, I, not kids, some students that are very, very active at recess and you have some that go over on the corner, you know, in the corner, sit down and chat, which is, you know, that's what recess is. It's not, you know, I was down and saw Ms. Bellamy at Castle Hayne, I assume at Carolina Beach. And boy, I tell you, they have just an unbelievably structured, wonderful. I would encourage anyone to go down and watch what Ms. Bellamy does down there. And I know we have other great physical education teachers throughout the county, but she's taken on herself to really make the recess down there just a beneficial physical activity for everyone. Also, I'd like to recommend that we don't, you know, we're kind of giving in here in section D two, where we say that we want to have moderate to vigorous physical activity for fifty percent of the time or more. But I think we should actually say at least seventy-five percent of the time. But as my wife pointed out, the, the bottom line there, and I would ask Dr. Faust to look into this if you wouldn't mind for us. Class for physical education should be equivalent in size to those of other academic classes.
I had the same comment, Pete. Those classes are like spilling out of the seams.
You know, I, I remember back in my physical education days, I taught a health class where we didn't have, we were like fifteen or twenty chairs short in the classroom. And, you know, because I had fifty-five students trying to teach a health class to them. So I think, you know, I guess I'm on my soapbox right now, but I think we need to have an answer. Is that really happening? Are we equivalent in size of physical education classes to other classes? So again, I would like to see our, us take the, the role and really try to up the, the number in section one and not say the goal of physical education is because we can say the goal is, but we're nowhere near there. But I think we should say we are required to perform, to promote lifelong physical education, physical activity, et cetera, et cetera. And, you know, the goal for elementary schools, the requirement for, for elementary schools is to provide, or at least have a report and see where we are on that. So we can get closer to that minimum of a hundred and fifty minutes. And then down to, and like I said, I'm on my soapbox, so I apologize to my, to everyone else, but you know, to ensure section three, second paragraph, unfortunately, I've seen in my years.
What's section three, Pete?
Section three, the second paragraph.
But like, is it what letter?
D, D, D three, I'm sorry. Same, same thing. Where it says it's structured, you know, recess and other physical activity may not be taken away from students as a form of punishment or to complete other assignments. You know, and unfortunately, a lot of times the other things are planned during that time. So speech, for instance, you know, so a lot of times, you know, we're pulling them out of, especially at physical education so they can go to speech or whatever else. I think that, you know, as long as we understand that other assignments can also be other pullouts. And I'm not saying speech once in a while is not horrible, but if it's every week that Johnny misses or Suzie misses physical education because they're being pulled out for speech, I don't know if that's doing what we want to be done here. Okay, I'm done. Sorry. Thank you.
So I want to respond.
Yes.
So I have a question when it comes to the last sentence, the class of physical education should be equivalent in size to those of other academic classes. Which academic classes are we asking about? Are we asking about, are we asking about our AP courses, our honors courses, our general courses?
Well, we're talking about middle school and, and elementary school here, so especially middle school. So I would say, again, just, just from my own, and that was a long time ago, I'll give you that. But at, at the middle school level, I, I've seen a lot of times that we have physical education classes of forty-five or forty or more, let us say. And we have, say, a math class that, you know, tops out at twenty-seven. So, or thirty. So, you know, that's significantly different in size. I would say, you know, I would say middle school. So that, you know, I'm not saying AP classes necessarily, but I'm saying high school, middle school, physical education. At the elementary level, your class typically goes, so it's, it's that same size. But I think a lot of the times when we schedule physical education at the middle school and high school level, you know, by state standards, I think we're allowed to have up to fifty students in that classroom. And a lot of times we do have fifty in that classroom. And that's why we, we're not getting moderate, vigorous physical activity for even fifty percent of the time, a lot of times. Because, you know, at some point they have to stand in line, wait to get, you know.
So are we looking at middle school or high school?
I would say both. Let's look at both of those.
And which courses? So what, what's the, the core, what's the, what's gonna be the academic course that we are going to measure by?
I would say, why don't we, since we're measuring, let's use our, either math or science class. Just a, a, a regular math or science class.
So I'm being, I guess my bootlegged attorney, when we say regular, that's subjective. So I don't know. I want to make sure that I have an equivalent, if you're saying equivalent, because that, that sentence is a subjective when you say equivalent in size to those of other academic classes. I need a, a number so that it may be at, you know, New Hanover, and I'm just using classes where theirs are thirty-five in their classes. Where over at Hagerd, it may be twenty-two in size. So my question is how, what are we using as equivalent? That's all I'm wanting, wanting to know. So that I will, when we talk to principals, or actually we, I don't know if we can pull schedules right now because the system is down for the summer. But when we're looking at schedules, what is it that we're wanting to be able to look for? That states a number because the equivalent is subjective.
Well, ju- just to answer that, I would say I would take, start with middle school, say with middle school, I would take your ELA and your math. I would add up all those classes, divide by those number of classes, that would give me the number. So if I took all my ELA classes and my math classes and the average for all those classes is thirty, thirty-two, that would be the number I would use. So at that school, thirty-two would be my number. You know, and if it's within a couple, but again, if it's fifty, you know, it's fifty in physical education and thirty-two in equivalent to other academic classes, then I'd say, well, we didn't meet this, this, this goal or this, this part of the standard or the policy. If on the other hand, it was thirty, you know, thirty-five and, you know, equivalent is not necessarily exactly the same number. So, but I would say if there's a substantial difference, then that would be something I would, I would ask, you know, I, I think we just have the numbers to begin with. So we can actually see, you know, at, at Hagerd High School, if we take our, you know, our, our basic level math classes and our basic level ELA classes, average them out and we have thirty-five and physical education is at forty-five, then I would say, again, we would not make this, we would not be equivalent in size. And like I say, I, I would just like to see those numbers and see where we are and see if we are, because again, impact our, our ability for, for that physical education teacher to, to have vigorous physical activity for fifty percent of the time. Or like I said, I'd like to see it higher than that. But even that minimal number, if you have fifty, fifty students in a classroom or forty-eight students in a classroom, you're not gonna, there's no way you're gonna make fifty percent or more of class time.
We'll take a look at.
All right. Thank you, sir. And like I say, I think that moving this, this policy and bringing it back to us, I think, I think I would like to see it back at the, you know, through the policy committee and not just brought right back to the board. That'd be my, that'd be my humble proposal.
You would like to see this before the policy committee in August?
Possible. I don't know when the.
I don't think we can, I don't think we have a SCAT, a SCAT, a SHAC meeting on the books until, or a Wellness Champs meeting until September. And SHAC and Wellness Champs alternate months.
So I, I can, I can help with that. Because I'm gonna have a meeting with Dr. Pinto who supports that work. And I think this needs to be reviewed prior to that time.
Yeah. And the wellness coordinator is a ten-month employee, so she's not even working right now. Is, is there any way in here?
Ms. Crable?
You muted yourself, Ms. Crable.
Can't hear you.
Can't hear you.
You are muted.
We're missing all of it.
Ms. Crable, we can't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. God, my phone was, I hate this. All this technology is, is overlapping and sorry, my phone was ringing. And I don't know why that affects my computer. So as part of health education, the, you know, personal hygiene is, is part of that. And if we are not having to change our clothes into at least non-sweaty clothes that you can go back to, is, is that addressable anywhere in, in this policy or in wellness plans or health plans?
Do you mean as a health concern or as a practical?
As just sort of a practical, you know, that because we don't want to deal with other issues about how kids are changing their clothes or who's changing clothes with them and all that kind of stuff.
I think I would ask Dr. Smith to step in, to speak to physical education and how that instructional process goes and the management of that.
Thank you, Ms. Barnum. There's not really an explicit practice at, or let me say a consistent practice at all of our schools. I know for middle school folks, they provided the opportunity to change clothes if they want to. But typically what is required is just that they come with attire that would allow them to actively participate in the health and, and PE class.
Okay.
You know, and we can talk about all the developmental reasons why young people would be uncomfortable changing in a locker room with other young people. And then also, you know, sometimes the, just the, the length of the class would be.
Right, you don't have time.
Well, yes.
Okay, that, that's good. Thank you.
Yes.
All right. Does anybody else have anything on sixty-one forty?
I would just add in that in the section that Mr. Wildabore was speaking of, D three, on mine, it's page five of eight, that, that last paragraph, I mean, the last sentence in the first paragraph or two sentences, principals shall work with teachers to ensure that students meet the minimum physical activity requirement. And then the board will periodically measure and report progress toward meeting these goals. So that is going to be something that I think this version is much more explicit than prior policy, which I think is very helpful and seems to match the goals of the board. So I think you, you'll see much more information come forward, but I've added the part about including data from schools on class size.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much. All right. So let's move on to policy sixty-two hundred, goals of school nutritional services.
And just to clarify, Mr. Billy, this will come back to the policy committee before going to the full board.
Yes, that's correct. We will not be putting this on this month and it will come back at some point to the policy committee. Good. Ms. Barnum, did you have anything on policy sixty-two hundred?
I'm gonna hand this off to Mr. Anderson.
Oh, right. Yes, of course. Mr. Anderson?
Good morning.
Good morning to you for another thirty-three minutes.
I would just like to add that no one is gonna miss Imar more than I.
Oh, my gosh. I know.
But we have a very good candidate recommended and you guys will consider that tonight. So we're really excited about moving forward. Yes, we, and actually before Imar left, we, we did go over these policies. We did not have any comments on sixty-two hundred. It felt like it was sufficient. And I'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Ms. Crable or Mr. Wildabore, anything on sixty-two hundred?
No, except minimizing obesity. I need to be in all those classes. Sorry, I didn't. Too much information, of course. No, this is, this was good.
Can I ask you a question? And I, and I should know this, but I, I ran into this in one of the schools I was at where students could go at the elementary level, say, and get multiple offerings other than, you know, so do we, do we require the child or a child to buy the lunch from us before buying any additional à la carte, like cookies or anything like that? Or, you know, unfortunately, when I monitored some, some lunch rooms at times, you know, students would come back with five and six cookies. And, you know, mom may have sent them a sandwich and they had five or six cookies and the sandwich got thrown in the trash and they ate the five or six cookies. And of course, we, we counsel them, but is that something that we have a way to minimize anyway?
Well, we do. And I have, I have personal experience. My son was quite the entrepreneur. Money on his account, I think, and I never proved it, but I think he was actually buying those five or six cookies and then selling them for a profit to his friends. With the, with the Titan app, parents are able to see what they purchase and they can put limits on those purchases.
Excellent. Good, good.
With that app, you can. With that app, you can, you can control that. And if there are limits, then, then of course, you know, we see that uh at the, at the checkout.
Excellent.
And I had my daughter and her friends would take turn buying each other lunch, you know, on their account. So you'd get like two lunches and then you'd see what in the heck, how are you getting so much food? But they would buy each other lunch just as whatever. The parents can control all that. I, I learned that quickly.
Yes.
Good, good, good. Okay.
All right.
I'm good with sixty-two hundred going.
Very nice.
Move sixty-two hundred on for first reading on the August third board meeting, and that brings us to organization of school nutrition services policy sixty-two ten.
And again, we reviewed this policy and uh we're fine with the recommended changes.
All right, excellent. Mr. Anderson, Ms. Crable, Mr. Woldenbor.
I'm good with it.
I'm good.
Thank you very much. Please move policy sixty-two ten on for first reading. That brings us to sixty-two twenty, organization of school nutrition services. Mr. Anderson.
Again, we um, we reviewed the policy with the recommended uh changes and um we were fine with what is presented.
I had a question, and again, I apologize for not knowing the answer to this. I know different counties have different rules on things like this, but is it, am, am I correct that in New Hanover County, if a student is well behind in their um, their lunch account, that they would be excluded from field trips?
Um, that would not be a child nutrition policy, and I'm not aware of that.
I'm not aware of that either. Um, we can look into it, but-
Yeah, cuz I, I, I mean, again, years and years ago, uh, there, you know, there was a, a form that I saw that said at the bottom of it from one of the local schools that said, you know, that if your, if your, you know, lunch account is in arrears, that you would be excluded from, you know, from field trips. Uh, and I see, I see some, I see some, the thought behind it, but on the other hand, if the field trip is truly a, a educational experience, I don't know if we wanna limit our student-
I don't think that's allowable, um, but I would have to, I, I know it was addressed in the old policy, but I don't know if it's, if it was addressed here. Um, and I'm gonna completely confess that I haven't reviewed this one. Um, so Eddie, is there a section of this one that addresses the collection process or is that in another one?
Yeah, and section B of this policy sixty-two twenty, it talks about meal charges. And um, yeah, that, that we will provide um a reimbursable meal and um that we, the only thing we restrict are à la carte sales, um, and then it talks about the collection, but it does not, you know, it does not talk about being restricted from um, you know, field trips or other school activities.
Over the years, we've had different approaches to this and, you know, and, and, you know, at, at one point in time even had the schools pay, but, but um we have changed it to, you know, we're collecting from parents, not students. And so our philosophy has sort of been more recently that, you know, we, we will go to a, you know, we do have a collection agency for parents that we do try to collect um through letters and things, you know, once uh um the balance gets too high. But I, I don't think that that was supposed to involve the students at all.
Well, and Mary Hazel, if I can interject, if my recollection serves me correctly, when schools were responsible for paying those outstanding charges, um, there was discussion on the part um of principals in how to um have families more likely to pay, and so there were discussions in regards to restricting activities for children. So they were go, so students would have been restricted from um non-instructional type activities that took place at school.
But didn't we get rid of all that?
Oh, we did, we did. But there was some discussion, so-
Okay.
For your, you know, if, if you're remembering that, I'm sure it was probably from a few years ago.
It was. Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Do, do we have a threshold um of, when you said, when it gets too high, we might go to collection, is there a, a threshold for that?
We do, and I, I can't remember the number for, um, it, it's, it's, it's an amount of time and dollar amount that we um move it to the, the collection agi-agency, um, and I can pull up that for you, but I don't have it today.
Okay, so um is that something that we need to put into policy? Or is that something that we need to say that there is a schedule or there is a procedure that we fall back on?
Um, we do-
It does say turned over to a collection aid at the point the account is deemed uncollectible, so that's what um-
Right. Um, I wanna say it's, I ca- I just honestly, I don't wanna guess. And so it's been a couple of years since I've, I've been involved in the details of this, so I will get that for you and, and report it back. If you wanted to, to hold this, you know, we, we can have that for your next meeting, but I could also just provide it to you, to the board directly.
Yeah, and the policy was, is referring to um really a time that it's uh meal charges should be paid in full within thirty days.
Right.
It, it not a dollar threshold.
Okay, so if it hasn't been paid in thirty day, like, or is there like a number of collect, um, collecting um reach outs that, that would trigger that within, within thirty days? Or is it, like, I only called him once and it's been thirty days, or I've called them five times and it's been thirty days?
That, um, that I don't know.
I will get our, um, I, I know that child nutrition works directly with finance on the process for this, and I can get, get a write-up for how this sort of works in real life. It's been a little bit different, you know, obviously, we haven't been doing it past year because we haven't been charging for meals. So I have to go back to, to remember all these details, but I can get it for you. Um, and I know it was, there was two or three times a year that we, we pushed cap accounts over on the collection side. And just so the board knows, at the end of the year, any balances due, um, we actually have to write off to our local funds. Child nutrition cannot have, you know, receivables, you know, if, if it's considered uncollectible, they can't write it off. We have to do that local and then we continue trying to collect it on our side. So um it sort of leaves child nutrition and goes to finance at that point, but I will, I will follow up.
Okay. And then is it still, like, if, if, if a child um doesn't have money on the account that, that they can, that we just give them like a peanut butter and jelly and, and apple and a drink kind of sandwich?
They get a regular meal.
They just get, okay.
We don't have any alternative meals, do we, Eddie?
No, they get a uh, a regular reimbursable meal.
Okay, so there's no, you know, issue that I don't have enough money when I come up and everybody behind me is watching me get a bag?
Right. With uh à la carte sales.
You can't, you, you can't purchase à la carte?
Yeah, you get the, you get the reimbursable meal.
Okay. Okay. So, and is there, is there any, I, I was reading through, I couldn't find anything addressable for um, I, I guess we're talk, oh, never mind, never mind. I'm in the wrong policy.
So I have a, I have a question about the à la carte. So let's say that aunt gives the child seventy thousand cents or whatever and says, here's some ice cream money, but they have their parent has an um, an outstanding bill. Is the child able to buy ice cream?
I, I'm, I wanna say yes, and um, but I'll have to make sure of that. I think they have the, if they have the money to purchase it, we wouldn't restrict that, but I, I will verify that.
Okay, okay. Thanks.
If, if no one else has anything, I had a couple of questions. Um, so in previous policies, the, the committee suggested adding language in the nondiscrimination portion, so this would be A one. Uh, school officials may not discriminate based on race, sex, color, national origin, et cetera. And um the recommendation previously had been to add gender identity, is that um, just wanted to, to raise that point. And then um on section A, A eight, child nutrition program funds will be used. And it talks about indirect cost, and I was wondering from Mary Hazel if indirect costs are charred. This is sort of neutral on it, and there's the option to add that whether they will or will not be charged indirect costs.
The um, sorry, the, we don't currently charge and have, have never charged, but we have left the ability to charge if it was necessary, um, so that we don't end up at a situation where um the child nutrition operating balance gets too high. Um, we normally address it with, with just appropriating their fund balance to spend it in their program for equipment and those kinds of things rather than charging indirect cost. But we, i- it is important to kind of leave that option because if, if they have more than a three-month balance, it kind of affects their nonprofit status.
Thank you.
So um I do think that this particular language is, is subject to change in laws pretty soon in some of the bills coming through the Senate, so we might have to come back and address this if it changes. As I think it will.
So do we think this is good to go through for now?
Um, are, so are we gonna add um gender identity to A one?
We, we probably should be, just to be consistent. It was added into one of the policies we just looked at. I don't remember which one it was. It was, I think it was the um-
Distribution of-
Distribution of materials, yeah. It was added in blue in there, so I think we should, if we're, we should be consistent in our policies.
Yeah, I agree. I think we should add it.
So how about in um, in, oh, Deborah, go, finish your questions. I saw one more that I highlighted.
Those were the only two issues that I, I had noted. Um, well, I also noted the, the debt collection, but there was a good discussion about that already, so.
Okay, so um letter A thirteen, um, all competitive food, food sold on campus will meet federal, state and standard. Um, I didn't think we were allowed to have competitive foods um during school hours, like from midnight to um, you know, thirty minutes past the bell ringing.
That's right.
So what, so what's a competitive food? Um, is that, is it vending machines?
Well, the vending machines are, are limited as well, um, and there's, it talks about food brought in and uh non-programmed uh foods. I don't know the competitive foods. Uh, I'm not sure honestly what-
What does that mean?
Food we would have because we're not allowed to have um anyone competing with child nutrition during the school day.
Right. So um, yes, I thought I was just wondering what, what that meant because it would only, it would, we can't even sell candy bars, you know, different groups during the school day, it has to be like thirty minutes after.
So I'm looking at the notes um that McKenna sent me. Competitive foods include all foods and beverages other than meals reimbursed through the federally funded school nutrition program available for sale to students during, on campus during the school day. And then it talks about the um midnight to thirty minutes after the end of the school day, that they're prohibited, um, and then state standards prohibit the sale of foods of minimal nutritional value. So.
Cookies.
So it sounds like they're talking about the à la carte sales, which, which do have to meet the federal, state standards.
So the à la carte are not reimbursed through the child nutrition um program? They're not reimbursable? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so that's what that refers to.
It does, it kind of reads like that it's outside a child nutrition program, though.
Right. That, that's what I was, I mean, I got another impression about that.
And I'm wondering, do we have any situations um at, at like the high schools where a uh class that is doing, uh, you know, that, that's working on nutrition, that um, that they're, that they may be selling something during the school day? And they, I, I know they shouldn't, but I wonder if, if that class does it, you know? I know that in certain schools that I've been at over the many, many years, you know, that some of them actually would have a, like a luncheonette type thing where you could buy something.
The culinary arts, the culinary classes prepared, yeah.
Do we have anything like that that goes on at all?
Not be, that should not be occurring, no.
Okay, okay. And that wouldn't be that.
Dr. Faust, note to self, you might want to mention that to your high school principal.
So on um, what was that, A thirteen?
A thirteen, yeah.
All competitive foods uh sold, could we just insert within the child nutrition depart, or within the child nutrition department?
That makes sense.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Yep, I think that's good.
Just as long as we know what it means, yeah.
Yep, gives us a little more information, a little clarity.
Yeah, I agree.
Sold within the child nutrition department?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
But I'm still struggling to understand. So, so we don't mean competing with child nutrition?
I think what this is referring to is, is foods that we sell within the child nutrition program that are competing with the reimbursable meals. You know, reimbursable meals have got to meet the federal and state um standards, and we're saying that any, anything that we would sell within child nutrition also has to meet those same standards. So they would be our à la carte sales.
Like chicken nuggets.
To sell those without selling the, the primary meal first, right?
No, you could, in the um, you can choose.
Oh, okay.
Um, yeah, I mean, you, you can get the full reimbursable meal or you can choose um, you know, something else that, that we are selling.
Like chicken nuggets or a slice of pizza?
So one, one way to avoid the, that maybe would be to refer, because competitive food is a, is a term that's defined by federal regulation. Um, and so one way would be to refer to competitive food as defined by, you know, and give the citation to the, the federal regulation, which would-
Oh, I think that's a great idea. Or put, or put another letter that says definitions, you know, whatever, yeah, but just says defined by.
It's just that, yeah, the, the, the child nutrition programs are so heavily regulated by both state and federal law that I, I'm very leery of making changes um sort of on the fly. But I think if you define it or competitive foods defined as defined by um seven CFR twenty-ten or two, two hundred and ten point eleven, which is cited, it should, I believe that's cited in the um legal references, then, then that makes it clear to those who know and who operate the child nutrition program what that means.
Is, is this the policy, well, you know what, sixty-two thirty talks about competitive food standards, so maybe we'll get to it down there, and I don't remember reading it, but just closely, but um, does this policy, or is there another policy that we're coming to that talks about, because we're almost out of the food stuff, um, about schools who grow their own um vegetables and herbs being allowed to use those products in the preparation of our school meals?
Um, I don't recall seeing that in, in policy, but there is um, there are certain, um, there's a gap certification that's required for um, for anything like that, that we would, that we, we would use in the preparation of our meals.
So is that some, I mean, I, I like that, that we can do that, and I've seen it at different schools, especially the ones that have, you know, I mean, there's a lot of schools that, that do it, and so I didn't know if we needed to include that in policy just to say that we um were allowed with permission or through some certification, um, if we needed to be that specific or not, you know, cuz I, I've mentioned that to some people in other places, and they're like, you're allowed to do that? You know, and I'm like, well, yeah, I mean, why wouldn't we? You know, but I, I guess I started thinking about it, thinking, well, maybe we're not, we're using a pesticide we're not supposed to use, or maybe we're, yeah, I don't know.
Well, I, I, and I, I don't think we're, you know, allowed to do that. I'm not aware that that's being done anywhere other than CTA.
Okay. I know that in, in years past, and this is again a long time ago, that um like at Riceville Beach Elementary, that the child nutrition workers were growing tomatoes out in the back and using their tomatoes, you know, in their salads. So the, just like you'd be using in your backyard. So I just didn't, I mean, I think it's a great idea, and I would hate to not be able to do that. Or if maybe like a horticulture class is growing herbs, you know, n- not being able to use that, so I didn't know if that was worth talking about. And if I've just ratted, ratted out schools that are trying to do healthy things and learn farm-to-table techniques.
Not that they can't do that, um, but there, there are certain, certain requirements and certifications that need to be in place uh, before we do that, and, um, you know, when, in the case of Riceville Beach.
That was ages ago too, and those people aren't even there anymore.
Yeah, um, but I, I don't think that's being done today, except at CTEC where, um, you know, in, in partnership with Cape Fear Community College, um, you know, they, they do have a vegetable garden and a herb garden.
So, back to my original question, do we need to have a one-liner in here anywhere?
So I would like, I'm sorry, I just wanted to mention that this was a discussion a few years back. Um, and there was, I'm sure I can find some information, um, but I know Eddie was involved in the discussion, and from a special populations and like dietary restrictions, um, consideration and school health consideration. Um, somehow, we, we pulled together information and then realized this was not something that we thought was safe enough to do with all of the requirements. But, um, I'm happy to bring that stuff back or talk to Eddie and it can, we can.
Could we just talk about it, because, because I, I think it's a great idea, I understand exactly, like, exactly what you're saying, you know, as to why we wouldn't want to, but if it's, it's being used as, you know, maybe like a therapeutic thing for some of our, you know, classrooms, or as part of our hor- horticulture, you know, classes, you you, you want to, you know, cultivate that, you know, if we can, but we certainly don't want to, you know, poison anybody, or, you know, send somebody into, you know, anaphylactic shock because we've put in something that we didn't realize was bad.
I think that the child nutrition program is required to follow certain rules on where they obtain their food. So if, if the food is obtained through a permissible, I mean, so the, the operation standards say, uh, operated in compliance with all applicable state and federal law, if there is a law that permits, um, obtaining vegetables from a local farm or a school farm, then as long as they follow the, the regulations that allow them to source that food from a particular site, I, I don't know that you need to add anything more specific, but, um, doesn't mean you can't, but I think it is covered.
Okay, that's fine.
All right, are we good to move this forward with the changes?
And just, Wagner, are you, are you making those changes?
I, I am making those changes, I will circulate them just to make sure that I got them all correct, but I am making them as we go along.
Yeah, I would like to see that before, because, I mean, I have notes down here that several different people were looking into several different things. So I'm almost not even comfortable moving it forward right at this time, but if the other people are, and we get to approve it, then I'm good.
Yes, I'm comfortable moving it forward.
That'd be first reading anyway, right?
That's right.
Yes.
Yep, so, yep, we can change it in the interim if we need to.
Policy sixty-two twenty on for first reading, brings us to policy sixty-two twenty-five, free and reduced lunch and meal services, Mr. Anderson?
Yes, thank you, this, um, you know, policy basically covers the, uh, legal requirements for free and reduced. Um, the only suggested change that we had is, uh, in the second paragraph, um, we do offer electronic applications, and, um, it, it says that they're on the school website, but if we could, in that very last sentence, uh, add after the word "and," electronic, add electronic applications are available, and then on the school website.
And is this the school itself, or the school system?
This, this is the school system website, it's specifically the child nutrition website.
So maybe we should say that.
The school systems, child nutrition. Or, how about for consistency in the verbiage, instead of school system, we could say the child nutrition program website. I think that's how it's referred to, CNP.
And I think that we used reference to the district website, for example, in the Title IX policy, so I might look back at that and see what the reference was so that we're consistent.
Yeah.
And I can make that change, I, I thank you, Mr. Anderson, for raising that, I had a big question about forms. So are paper forms still also available in all of those places?
They are.
Okay.
Yeah, we're, we're encouraging the electronic, electronic applications, but, um, we will have the paper copies available.
Do you think that we'll get more, um, people, more students, and especially at the high school level, to apply um, by having it electronic, so that they don't have to turn it back in and have anybody, you know, see that they're turning it back in?
Um, I certainly hope so, I, I think that the, the biggest challenge that, um, that we have with free and reduced, um, applications at this point is we've been offering free meals for so long, and um, you know, we're going to be offering free breakfast and lunch next year, um, that when and if it goes back to paid meals, uh, collecting those free and, free and reduced applications will be a challenge.
So, right now, pretty much everybody in our district gets free breakfast and lunch?
That's correct.
Okay, if they want it.
If they want.
And that's just reimbursable lunches, right? Or re- reimbursable items?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, so are we good with policy sixty-two twenty-five? All right, excellent, put policy sixty-two twenty-five on for the August meeting for first reading. Policy sixty-two thirty, school meal, or, school meal and competitive food standards, Mr. Anderson?
Yes, thank you, um, in reviewing the recommended, um, additions, and, uh, we didn't have any, any comment, we're fine with the policy as it's presented.
Excellent, uh, Mr. Wildermore, Ms. Craybill.
So where in here does it talk about, um, the definitions of competitive food?
It's, uh, B, B. It says competitive foods, competitive foods are all, you can read for yourself, or read for you.
Where, in, in letter B?
Yeah.
Yeah, B one B.
Oh, B one B, oh duh, right in front of my eyeballs, okay, sorry. Okay.
So does the, um, I mean, do you want to use this definition in the other policy instead of referring to the federal regulation, or?
Actually, yes, I think that would be good.
Mm-hmm, that makes sense.
Well, I, I, I think it's really talking about, I, I mean, I think it's talking about two different things. Um, the other policy was saying that, um, things that we, and maybe it all falls in the same category. Let's see here, other, I guess it all falls in the same category, um, you're, you're right. It's because this definition is everything other than reimbursed. So whether we're selling them through the child nutrition program, um, yeah, any, any, anybody else that would be a competitive food. Yeah.
I mean, that is, the, the definition here in this policy is, is tracks the definition in federal regulation.
Yeah.
Yeah, then I think that would be the wise thing to do, um, did anybody else have anything, uh, Ms. Craybill?
Well, I just, I was, um, when I'm, I'm looking from the, you know, classroom celebration point of view, in letter B, number seven, foods brought from home for school events, so, um, that is saying that we cannot bring, um, homemade food, is that correct? Okay, so what is the definition of a school event? Because we have many parent support organizations that provide lunch for our, um, staff. Did, does that fall outside of here?
Yeah. Yes, because it says served to students, this is addressing what we serve to students specifically.
Okay. And there's some schools, like their National Honor Society or their Beta Society students, bring in like homemade food for their teachers, and so we're saying that's not allowed?
Again, the policy refers to, uh, must receive advanced permission before bringing or sending any food or beverages to school to be served to students. So that wouldn't cover teachers.
Okay. And again, it, it, we saw this before, when it says each principal may establish ad- additional standards for food brought from home to be shared for classroom activities. Is, is that something that, because I know some of the school wellness policies have really, you know, cracked down on what they can bring in, is that, so is that why we're saying "may," instead of having it be consistent across all schools?
And, uh, and I may be wrong in this, but I think one thing is, you know, certain classrooms may have situations where children have, you know, peanuts are not a bad, uh, item, but you may have a child in that classroom with peanut allergy, so maybe all, uh, first grade doesn't use peanuts or some, you know, something along those lines, that could be part of that. You know, you also don't want to say, well, you know, my, my child loves peanuts, and, but he's in Johnny's class, you know, whatever, that one class, so maybe you say across all first grade, you just don't have anything with peanuts, or, or whatever else may cause allergies.
Okay. It says in, yeah, later on down, it says that, you know, um, superintendent may take all reasonable steps necessary to prevent violation of competitive food rules. That's pretty harsh, or pretty, pretty straight out there. And so that's why I'm thinking that we need to be consistent, so that the superintendent doesn't have to decide if somebody has stepped over the competitive food line.
I'm, I'm pretty comfortable with the policy as is, um, but if there's any changes that somebody would like to make, just let's, let's make them.
Okay. I just, I, yeah, this is definitely going to have to be one that is reviewed at the beginning of the school year with, um, parents. And classroom celebrations.
But i- is there anything that you would like to change, or are you good with it?
No, no, it's just, it's, the, the wording of this, you know, has been, um, in previous policies, it hasn't been this clear. It has been more nebulous, and it has not really been um, enforced uniformly across the board at all schools, based on my observation.
So have, just, have we allowed individuals to bring in food for students and they don't have, I always used to use the words, if you don't have, um, what is it, a, a, a code, that's
The barcode from the store?
Uh, well, actually, it was the, um, sanitation grade, if you don't have sanitation grade, then it can't be brought in. Meaning that it needs to be purchased from a store and, uh, restaurant, but many years ago, I, I thought school districts had stopped, um, allowing people to bring in food for classes that they had cooked at home, um, because people were getting sick, and so are we still doing, is that going to be a, a strong shift, is that, because we need to know what we need to make sure we're, uh, principals are aware of at the beginning of the school year?
It, I don't know that it's going to be a strong shift, because it, it happens differently across the board. Um, it, it's been my experience in PTA that it is, it is not handled the same, I would definitely just reiterate that with the principals at the beginning of the school year, you know, just so everyone is clear, because if this is in red, so that means we've added it, right?
It, it means that it's in your existing policy, if it was happened in red by McKenna.
Okay.
And I would say, I, I, I dare say, I think most of the principals that were around for a while know that you, you can't do some of these things, but I think, you know, maybe some of the newer principals that have come from other, uh, districts, and, and that, that may need to be reminded of, you know, because, you know, you think, especially with the celebration thing, oh, well, celebration's great, we, we do it, but then you know, I mean, it's amazing how many people want to bring in pizza during lunchtime for the, you know, for
Right, you're not even allowed to do that, right?
Mm-mm, that, that kind of thing, so.
The, um, Eddie, uh, there's a note in the correlation table about the, whether the thirty minutes after the dismissal bell is applicable based on whether the school district has selected option one of the DPI standards for smart, smart snacks rules, do you know, is, is that something that needs to be addressed?
Where is the, I, I see that in the correlation table, where is it, um, where is she referencing, subsection B two?
It says in policy, oh, and in sixty-two twenty.
B two and sixty-two twenty should be modified to extend the applicable time, and B three should be omitted. So I just don't, I don't know whether the board's school nutrition program agreement elected option one to extend the, the, you know, it's just not clear to me what, what the district has done and what that refers to. I, I was a little confused by that sentence, or that section about the option one.
Right, I know we are following the smart snacks rules. And I did not see that in here, um, I apologize, I missed that, so you're in, you're in policy sixty-two twenty, or sixty-three hundred?
Sixty-two thirty. But it says that it may need a change to policy sixty-two twenty if the timeline is modified.
I mean, I guess my question in that would be, uh, and a lot of, I think, other districts use, at the end of the last lunch, that that's, that's the end of this competitive concern, so if, if a group did want to do celebration, you know, that they would always have to wait until after the last lunch, and then if you wanted to do something in a celebratory, uh, manner, you could do that after the last lunch. But a- as this policy reads, it's throughout the whole school day, so if the last lunch is
The, the federal law, that changed to, as, as, it was explained to us, it was not the last lunch, it was that end of the instructional day.
Okay, okay.
But I, I, I'm just going on memory and would defer to Deborah on that, so.
So that might be something we need to reiterate with principals, or point, or point out to principals. Especially new principals.
So it looks, again, I'm looking at the School Board Association notes, um, which references the school nutrition program agreement with DPI. And, and I guess without knowing what that says, i- it's difficult to know if the timeline is appropriate, but Eddie, you said that you have already reviewed this with the child nutrition folks and
With child nutrition, and, um, that, that wasn't, um, wasn't something that we discussed, uh, or that Immer had brought up. Um, you know, the thirty minutes after the dismissal bell rings, um, was consistent with our understanding, and I don't know if that has to do with it, we are, we are, um, we are complying with the federal smart snack rule. Uh, and it's probably why that was extended to, uh, after the school day, as opposed to thirty minutes after lunch.
So, so this is meaning to me then, that we can't have popsicles on the playground for afternoon recess? Is that, is that correct?
You, you can go through the child nutrition department to get those.
Okay, all right. And that's not a smart, smarty pants answer, that is a good legitimate, I know.
Okay, so we will put policy sixty-two twenty on for first reading, and
No, sixty-two thirty is the one we're talking about right now, um, but I do have, I do share Deborah's concern, if we don't even know what option we have, then sixty-two twenty and sixty-two thirty, um, may not be ready to go forward.
Um, I'm, yeah, I think it's for first reading, and I will, I, I think the policy is correct, I will verify that and provide information to you if you want to put it on for first reading.
Okay.
I'm good with that.
I'm good with that, yeah, I'm good with that.
All right, hopefully we can move through this last policy very quickly, it is policy sixty-three hundred, I do not believe there is sufficient time to move past this one. Goals of student transportation services, Mr. Anderson?
You, you know what, Nelson, can I suggest that we hold off on, I'll, and, and keep the, the grouping together rather than have one in transportation and one, and the rest not? I mean, does that make more sense?
That's fine, that's absolutely fine with me. So, at eleven forty-nine, I will entertain a motion to move.
May I ask one additional question before you end?
Sure.
Um, this is more of a confession than a question, I guess. The discussion we had earlier about restrictions based on, from, from activities in the schools such as athletics, when fees are owed, we did find it in the new poli-, Nancy found it, not me, in the new policy for extracurricular activities and organization. So, that might be something you want to come back to later, but it does state that, you know, all fines and fees owed to the system have to be paid before students can participate in extracurriculars. So, if that is not something the board wants to do, we might need to come back to this. It was in the old and the new policy.
What policy is that, Mary Hazel?
It's the new thirty-six twenty.
Thirty-six twenty, yeah.
And so, I, it just.
I will, I will discuss that with the other committee members and if we feel it warranted, I guess we'll bring it back and revise thirty-six twenty at our next policy committee meeting.
Okay, well, so kind of along those same lines, Nelson, if, if we're keeping a list of the ones we want to go back and look at, I don't know how, I mean, I know that our focus has been only on looking at moving forward and getting all things adopted, but there are several board policies that we do need to take a look at, so how do I get that brought forward to be, to be put on our agenda somehow? Because I am in agreement with Mary Hazel on that. If our policy we just adopted says you can't do it, then we need to go back and look at that if we don't want that to happen.
Yep.
Because now we have two policies saying two different things and that, you, you can't have that.
Ms. Crable, I would just recommend that if you have suggestions that you make them at the, this meeting or the, the next meeting to be added to the following meeting's agenda.
Okay, so I wanted to, then let me, let me just tell you what I'm thinking and then I'll tell, and then we can decide what, how to do it. So, policy twenty-six sixty, the Cape Fear Community College trustees policy. We had some hiccups, you know, as we were going through it this time, and I think that we should address that before we, while it's still fresh in our mind. So, and then we need to look at, I want to, I want to look at twenty-two thirty about our board committees with that. And then, and then thirty-six twenty to add on there to make sure that we are, that we are saying what we want to say. So, how do, so do I put that on to look at at our next policy committee meeting or how do we do that?
I would just send it to me in an email and I can add it to the agenda.
Okay. And then the other thing that I, since we have just a few minutes before we have to go, is I've talked about this before and at some point I wanted to have our committee, and I don't know if we need everybody, you know, all of the, the senior staff that is, that supports us, you know, so dutifully for three hours, but to talk about adding either a parent representative or a teacher representative or a principal representative to our policy committee. The, the more stakeholders that you have involved as, and, and as non-voting members, the more buy-in you will get and the more, the, the, the more input that you'll receive on things that we might not have thought about. So, how do we go about talking about that?
Think we could probably add it to the next policy committee meeting agenda as well.
We, we might need to look at the board policy on committees because that, that is, those committees are formed in accordance with board policy.
Right, right, and that's what we're finding that there, the, what's on our website, what's in our, what was in our training packet, what is in our policy, they're not matching, so that one definitely has to be looked at.
So, the, the policy on, on, the policy on policy committee says that the committee is comprised of three board members and assisted by administrative staff at the direction the superintendent or designate me. So, there's no provision for, you know, staff or other community members or parents or other representatives, so that would be something you would look at in, in looking at policy twenty-two thirty.
Well, and the other part of that is you also have to understand, we all have to realize that a principal to take three hours of, during instructional day might be probably, and I, I, I would agree, I would love to have a principal on, on, on the committee because, I mean, they're, they're in the, you know, the throes of, of what's going on all the time. But again, also to say, well, you're going to take three hours, you know, I know it's only once a month, but that's still a huge chunk of time for a principal to, to be absent from his or her school, even if it's.
Yeah, you, I mean, you certainly could get input. I mean, first of all, all of these meetings are public and anyone who wants to attend can do so and, and then send, you know, an email to the committee member, something you could have a a, a process by which you send out draft policies to certain, you know, groups, principals and, and ask for feedback before it comes to the committee. I think that's part of what the, the staff is doing is, you know, the relevant people that are tasked with carrying out those policies are looking at them ahead of time, but there's certainly no reason why a larger group couldn't be asked for input. So, those might be other ways to address it as well.
Through NCOPA, we could, I would do a send it to NCOPA.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I just, I think that would be helpful because the print, I mean, how many times is the word principal named in all of these policies, you know, and they, they, you know, principals have a lot on their shoulders and you're counting on them to do a lot of, you know, hard work and just, and making, you know, decisions. So, yeah, why wouldn't we want to hear from them? But that's, yes, I, I didn't know how to, how to talk about that in our, in, as a, as a policy committee, you know, with that. So, maybe we can just handle, we can address that at, when we have a work session on board committees.
I think that sounds good.
And that, yeah, and, and that's fine with me. I just wanted to get that because I had this sticky note, you know, on my wall looking at me, you know, constantly. I'm just trying to figure out how best to get it off my wall and into like something to do.
All right.
Okay.
With that, I will entertain a motion to pass or to put on for first reading at the August third board meeting. Policies fifty-two ten, six thousand, sixty-one hundred, sixty-one ten, sixty-one twenty, sixty-one twenty-five, sixty-one thirty-five, sixty-two hundred, sixty-two ten, sixty-two twenty, sixty-two twenty-five, sixty-two thirty, and sixty, sixty-two thirty. Is there a motion?
Oh, moved.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second. But for, for discussion, do we need to say in there that several of these, we are moving forward pending amendments? So, do we need to note which ones were pending amendments or we're just, are, are our own notes going to do for that?
I think there, you could say as, with, with the changes as discussed in the committee and, and then I'll be sure to circulate those.
Okay, yeah, I, I would like to, to say that just so that we know because we, because there were several. So, can I amend the motion or?
Sure, is there a motion to pass the policies named as amended?
Yes. I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Okay.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Crable, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Wildermore, how do you vote?
Yay.
And I vote yes. All right, moving on to item five of our agenda, adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Crable, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Wildermore, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I will also vote yes. I will see you all in five and a half very short hours. Enjoy the rest of your Tuesday afternoon and enjoy your lunch.
You, too. Bye-bye.
Thank you, bye.
Bye.
Thank you, everyone.